Well, welcome everyone to the Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, September twenty seventh. Going to remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded. At this point, I'm going to ask our, I'm going to call roll call. For members, Jim McBane. He's muted, but I see him. Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Dave Hatfield.
President.
Greg McIntosh.
Yeah.
Sue Me Humphries.
Yeah.
And Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Okay, Joe, as clerk, can you read the, uh, the legal notice?
Sure can. Uh, consistent with the governor's orders, extended certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public. Could you and or listen to this meeting in real time? If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. Meeting ID eight three three six eight six six seven zero zero zero, passcode three two two five seven zero. Please use only dial in our computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recording, compliant with the American with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renault, town engineer at seven eight one two four six six three eight zero, six three zero eight as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your requests. Advance an occasion will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessory ability barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two. Twenty seven dash seven Dana Rodriguez, trustee for PSD A Trust, application for a special permit. Under article sixteen, section one ninety dash one zero one F of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to signage. The property is shown as map twelve lot parcels one fifty four of the assessment map and is located at three seven seven Main Street. Three twenty four dash eight Shannon Crosby and Elizabeth L Crosby. Application for a determination and or finding with respects to continuation and extension of non-conforming uses. Under article nine, section one ninety dash fifty of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to construct in addition on to an existing single family dwelling, the property is shown. At as map twelve, uh, twenty five lot parcels L eight eight E of the assessment map and is located at ten Merrill Terrace, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Um, looking across. Okay, first case up is our continued hearings. And the one that's up is cases twenty three fourteen, twenty three fifteen, twenty three sixteen, twenty three seventeen, Kimman Block LLC. Located at three sixty nine through three seventy one Main Street. Mr. McGrail.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Um, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing the applicant. Um, is Mr. Tarbell not here? Oh, I see he is. I just wanted to see what members were here, so.
See.
Okay, so, uh, basically, uh, um, uh, this is regarding three sixty nine and three seventy one Main Street. Uh, Kimman Block LLC, um, what we, um, um, I, I, um, wanted to bring up a revised site plan that I sent to you, Mr. Chair, today. We cleaned up. Uh, we had to clean up the zoning table to make it reconcile with the architectural plans. Uh, that they're, they're now reconciled. There were some setback issues that had changed that he had not caught up on. That I caught, um, uh, earlier today. Uh, and I've also revised conditions, uh, pursuant to the last meeting. Um, that I would like to go over with you. There were some comments made and some changes that had to be made to the condition, so. If I may, I think maybe the best spot is to start with the conditions and then I can show you the site plan.
Go, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. So really, I'm going to point out where the conditions changed, the re- the request that you had. Um, and the first one dealt with number two. Uh, and this was a request of, uh, Mr. McIntosh. Uh, that we, that this deals with the anticipated alterations of the original bank building. And that there was a request to kind of incorporate the language referencing the architectural plans that show it. So now it reads it is anticipated that there will be alterations or changes to the original bank building on the property, including but not limited to windows, doorways. And openings is depicted on the final architectural plans. And it will be in discretion of the board to determine if any of these alterations or changes can be approved as minor amendments. Or if they are material, thus requiring a new hearing. So that was that change. I'm happy to, if there's any comment or any wordsmithing on that, happy to entertain that.
Does it basically say the same thing on, on the plan? Because doesn't it say in, in these, um, it said something on the plan, right? But then it says something in these conditions that if there's an inconsistency between the plan and this, the plans control?
I'm going to bring it up, Greg.
Um, okay.
I don't remember, so second.
So I guess that would be, you don't have to do it now, but when we get to the plans, then that would be.
Well, there's no change in the architectural, so I can bring those up real quick to kind of close this issue out. Um, so. There it is. Okay, so let me get to that area, Greg. These are the architecturals. Let's see the note that was on that. It's down the bottom. There you go, Greg.
All right, yeah, that seems fine.
You okay with it?
Yep, yep.
Great. Thank you. Okay, and then the other change was, um, what we did is nothing all the way down. We changed this. Greg, you were requested that we put, uh, W W M G L D Legal Counsel. Which we did. That was on the easement that goes to the light department. Um, and then we changed the name of D H C D to the current name of uh, Executive Office of Housing and Liberal Communities. And then at the end, these were, these are the two conditions. So if you remember, the the, the, uh, engineering department wanted some language to keep the access to the town building open. Uh, the back of the, uh, um, Arts and Cultural Exchange. So, uh, we had had language in that, and then there was discussion on like deliveries and staging and the downtown area and to meet with town officials and make sure that, um, any requirements that they have are addressed. So, um, I told you I would go back and come up with some language based on what we've done in the past, and I think eighteen kind of captures it, so. What we've got is prior to commencing any, and I, and this is, you know, no work, so any site work demolition indoor construction collectively, the work. The applicant shall meet with the police department, fire department, Department of Public Works, and the building department to discuss items, including but not limited to delivery times, sequencing, maintaining reasonable access to the rear of the property owned by the town of Wakefield, known and numbered as nine, uh, Abbey Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts during construction. And procedures related to the work, uh, during construction and procedures related to the work. And the applicant shall comply with any requirements of said departments. So we're giving them some pretty broad discretion. And I think the work covers everything.
Agreed. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay.
And then the other thing was, uh, Jim McBane had pointed out the, the issue with the, um, two issues, uh, the street trees. On Chestnut Street, and the board had designated Jim and I to speak with, uh, the town engineer on the street trees. The other issue was on the planters in the garage, which I'll get to. But as far as the street trees go, um, Jim and I did correspond with, uh, Bill Renault. Bill thinks he can do something there, but you know, he, he doesn't know until he kind of gets out there and we figure things out. He thinks he's going to need street, uh, tree grates. Um, to get some street trees in there. Um, and he might want to move the sidewalk around a little bit, so we came, based on that, working with Jim and, uh, Bill, we came up with this condition. The applicant shall provide and plant three street trees and tree grates uh, on the Chestnut Street side of the property as they had depicted on the final architectural plans. And if they are accepted and allowed by the appropriate town of Wakefield officials. Furthermore, the exact location of the three street trees and layout of location of the sidewalk and any grass or mulch strip on the Chestnut Street side of the property shall be as determined and approved by the Department of Public Works. So we're going to work with him in that regard.
I should, I should note here, um, when we get to the plan, I just want to make one comment uh, on this revised plan. But I'll wait until then.
Yep. The only, you know, the more you, the more you look at this stuff, so the only suggestion change I would have of my own, own here is applicant should provide and plant three st- street trees and provide three. Because we're not going to plant tree grates.
Right, and the only question I have is should there be something in there? Uh, species to be determined by the town as well? Size and species.
Yep. Uh. Okay, the exact location, uh, exact location and species.
And size.
Yep.
Because quite honestly, when you plant trees in a sidewalk, sometimes you want to plant smaller trees because you can't actually fit the ball into the area that they're going in the sidewalk if you do too big. Um, so I would let Dennis and Bill tell you what they want and where they want.
Makes sense, Chip. So I just added that, Chip. I said furthermore, the exact location and species and size of the three street trees.
Perfect.
Yep, do we want, uh, for the other members of the board and Brian, I guess. Um, do we want to add some language about maintaining the trees for a certain amount of time? Indoor guaranteeing their life. So if they do fail within the first year or so. The, the idea is that we want them there and we want the best chance of their success. You know, to thrive. Do we want to add language about the property owner maintaining the, the trees? Indoor guaranteeing them for a certain amount of time?
I think a year would be reasonable. By then, you know, it's kind of. And, and now they can do them with water bags and all that type of stuff, so it's not that onerous necessarily. Uh, but we know the town's not going to water them. So I think a year would be appropriate.
I, 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 I'll be able to pull some language for that, Mr. Chair, that we can deal with in the decision. I'll just make a note of it.
Okay.
Because I've got some language that we, that I've used with the planning board on street trees that I can just copy and paste over.
Yep.
Brian, going back up, if we're getting specific with provide and plant on the grates, it should be provide and install also.
Yep. Hang on, Greg, let me just get the guaranteed street. Please, just as a place marker, one year. Okay, uh, it should plant and provide, okay, got it, Greg, and install, right?
Yep.
You good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Now, the, the last issue was the planters in the garage that show on the architectural elevation. So, uh, if you want to bring that up, or does the board recall that?
Did anyone need to see it?
I can do, I got it right here. I can, I still have that screen available, so I'll show it to you. So you see it here? Jim had pointed this out. See the planters in the windows? So, so this is interesting and, and this, this I think the board knows, I'm a firm believer of, of, uh, full disclosure in honesty. So when I went back on this issue, I went back to the architect. And I said, you know, the board wants to know, you know, what you're going to do here and how it's going to be maintained and what, what's going to be planted here, so. The architect's response was, well, that's a responsibility of the landscape architect. And, and so my response to the architect was, we don't have a landscape architect on this project because there's really no landscaping except for this and the other ones that put it on the elevation. So, you know, I don't know what to tell you, so. So then we went back to the client and the client said, well, why are they on elevation? So this was put on as a pretty thing on the elevation and it's a great idea, but it wasn't thought out, so. So rather than come up with a, you know, a fake answer and just like, oh, we'll, we'll do this, we, I came up with this condition. It, it says the final architectural plans depict planters inside the building that show through openings in the building. Prior to applying for building permit, the applicant shall submit to the board a plan for the planters. Including proposed plantings, operation, and maintenance for the review and approval of the board. Once approved by the board, the applicant should comply with the approved plan. So we want to look at it. We think we can do like a drip system with some planters, but, you know, we don't want to rush it and just come up with a convoluted answer for you in two weeks. So we're saying we'll have an answer for you before building permit is, is, uh, applied for.
All right, any issues with that, board members?
I have no issues with that. I just want it noted in the O and M as well of the maintenance. And that, you know, whatever the plan is, if they're going to do seasonal plantings. I mean, it, these are great things and it's a great idea and it'll be really nice. But they got to be done well. If everything's sitting there dead, it's going to look worse than having nothing, so. In the O and M, it really has to speak to what they're going to do, when they're going to do it, and how they're going to do it.
Yep, I just made a note of that, Chip.
Ryan, did your client think about just taking it out of the picture and just getting rid of it altogether?
He did, but he thought that would be disingenuous because, you know, that was presented to the board and you know, board members saw it, so, you know, he did. He said.
I know, probably.
I mean, to be honest, he kind of said to the architect, why the heck did you put that there?
I figured it was just a mistake.
You know, just kind of like, you know, but, you know, I mean, the board is, you know, and then, so he talked about it and and he said, you know, yeah, I'd like to get rid of it, but I presented it to the board and, you know, if it's there, then we'll deal with it. So if the board doesn't want it, it doesn't think it's practical, he'd be happy to take it out, but he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to retrade the project with the board. That's not his objective.
No, I mean, my, my opinion is it's appropriate. My opinion is it can be handled. And my opinion also would have been that if it was void from the beginning, we would have talked about these holes that didn't have anything. So I don't think it's inappropriate. I think it can be handled. And I think, you know, they're going to have management, they got enough units that somebody's going to be at this building on a weekly, bi-weekly basis, so they can handle drought resistant shrubbery of some, you know, not shrubbery, but plants, uh. There, there can be a plan and it probably should be a seasonal plan.
He thought that, Chip, he said that, that it will be seasonal plantings, yeah.
Yeah, and if that, that's great, because you know what, you, you, you know, this time of year, you put kale and a couple grasses in and couple mums and you're done, and they take very little maintenance.
You can even do something in the winter with some evergreens.
It's, it's minimal, it's minimal effort for dressing up the front of the building and particularly the entry, basically.
Yep.
It's, it's like your front lawn, basically, in a way.
Well, yeah, I mean, the architect put it there for a reason, so.
Okay, let's move on.
So that's, that's, that was the buffed up conditions that the board had asked for. Um, and then, um, as I said, I, uh, sent you, Mr. Chair, just a revised, uh, site plan. I don't know if I need to bring it up. It's just got today's date, and what we did is we cleaned up some setbacks on the zoning table. We didn't make any substantive changes on the, uh, on the, on the plan at all. Uh, just cleaned up the parking table and the zoning table to be reflective.
Brian, could you bring it up? Because I just want to point out one thing that I talked to you about.
Yep.
You saw something else on the plan we should be aware of?
Uh, yeah. I Googled it.
What sheet, what sheet do you want, Jim?
I think two.
Okay.
Next one.
Yep.
So zoom in a little bit.
What area?
Uh, up by the entry to the garage.
Got it.
Right on, up, up the street, uh, okay.
Right there, Jim?
Yep. So you see where it says line of sidewalk at the property edge on the left? Move it over to the right, Brian.
Right here, Jim?
No, no, other side.
Other way.
Other entry.
Limited sidewalk?
Yeah.
Further, Jim, or right there?
Oh, right there.
Okay.
So just beyond what it says sidewalk limits, which Brian is just over sidewalk limits. There is a tree and a grass strip there. And I think that that grass strip that's in the property should also be in this area and align with what's already on the other side of that sidewalk replacement line. So it all becomes one.
Right here, Jim, right in this area?
No, to the left, up.
Oh, okay.
Up at the property edge, yeah.
Got it.
Right in there.
Yep.
That would continue what's on the other side of that property edge and would be homogeneous with basically what's happening in front of the building.
Yeah, and that, that's what that condition deals with, because that's what Bill Renault said, that, uh, you know, he's got to work out how he wants to lay out the sidewalk. We're going to, we're, we're, we're replacing that sidewalk. I mean, that's what the limit of side, so we're replacing it all the way down. So you see it going from there? And it's still replaced all the way down. That was one of the things that, so we're going all the way down to Main Street. And Bill's going to, and, and so Bill's, Bill Renault is going to tell us how he wants that sidewalk done. And where he wants the grass strips to be or not be, and where he wants those street street trees to be planted. What he said was, and you know this, Jimmy, it's just, it's too early for him to commit to that.
Yeah, I understand, but I just pointing this out to the rest of the board, basically, that from my opinion is that on that edge, that greenery should, the grass should extend itself up. Somely Bill would do that as well, because there's already a, a strip on that other side of grass.
So Jim, are you comfortable that the condition that was in there covered your concern?
Yeah, I think at the time when Bill gets into this, we'll just reiterate the same.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the site plan?
Nope.
Okay. Anything else to present, Brian?
No.
Any comments, further comments, questions from the board on either one of those? Hearing, then I will open it up to the public for public comment. If you'd like to pu- comment on, uh, this case that you've, or what you've heard tonight, please use the raise hand function. Or somehow signal me on Zoom. Seeing none, I will close it to public comment. Back to the board, pleasure of the board.
Well, Mr. Chair, for the record, um, I've caught up on this and the other continued hearings, um, from the meeting I missed last time, so.
Yeah, I saw your affidavit in the file.
Okay.
One thing we might want to do, Brian, is you know the transition between Dave and I on this, we might just ask for a little bit more time. Um, I think we're extended to the thirty first of October. I think we'd like to have it extended a couple of weeks into, uh, November. If that's amenable to your client.
Yeah, just, uh, for purposes of, uh, filing decisions.
Correct.
Yeah, that, 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 that's fine. That makes sense. Because the clock, the clock ticks quick on these. That'd be fine.
Yeah, and there's, there's a number, uh, yeah, there's four approvals here, you know, four cases, so.
That's right. So mid-September, maybe the seventeenth?
Uh, November, you mean.
Uh, yeah, thanks, yeah, since November.
Yep.
So I would, I would offer that to the board, an extension for a time to render filed decisions until November seventeenth, if it's accepted by the board, and send a letter to Gail to that effect.
So, Mr. Chair, I will move that request for consideration. I'll second that.
Okay, uh, regular voting members on that, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We ready for a motion?
I think so. All right, Mr. Chair. So we have four. You said four applications, there'll be four motions here. Um, all based on the final site plan by Engineering Alliance dated September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, that we just saw. And the final archi- architectural plans by Kelsa Design Architects dated September eighth, twenty twenty three. And the conditions, they will be subject to the conditions that we just reviewed with the updates made at tonight's hearing. Okay? So first, I make a motion that we grant a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to section one ninety thirty two, one ninety forty five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. Allowing a twenty unit garden apartment in combination with a seven thousand eight hundred and eighty eight square foot restaurant use as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. And this is based on the findings that the use requested is listed in the Table of Use Regulations as requiring a special permit in the district for which the application is made. The requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. There is a dire need for housing, including affordable housing in the town of Wakefield and the surrounding area. The requested use will not create or add to undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The requested use will not overload any public water, drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system for such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the needed area or other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to the public health, convenience, or welfare. The requested use will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. This use will put a, a vacated and blighted property to a beneficial use and add to the affordable housing inventory. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and it will not adversely affect the zoning district. Furthermore, the non-residential uses permitted in the zoning district are not noxious to the residential use. Additionally, in accordance with one ninety dash forty five of the zoning bylaw, the board also reviewed this section, which in pertinent state in, in pertinent part states that in reviewing a site plan, the special permit granting authority or other pickable agency shall consider, among other things, the following. The convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian tra- movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, properties or improvements. Adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage, refuse, and other waste, and the methods for surface and stormwater drainage. And the provision for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the servicing of the buildings and related uses on the lot or tract. The board has considered all of the above referenced criteria and is satisfied. And again, this is based on the conditions that have been already presented. And that is the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that one's approved.
Next motion, that I, I make a motion that we grant a special permit pursuant to one ninety thirty two dot one of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, allowing reductions and or alterations to dimensional requirements under section one ninety thirty two D and table two of the bylaw related to a twenty unit garden apartment in combination with a restaurant use as shown on the final site plan and final architect- architectural plans, including the following. A, allowing a floor area ratio of one point nine eight and as shown on the final site plan. B, allowing a reduction in the required front, side, and rear setbacks to be that as shown on the final site plan. C, allowing an open area of two point two percent as shown on the final site plan. D, allowing building or lot coverage of sixty six point nine percent as shown on the final site plan. Allowing a maximum height of forty feet and as shown on the final site plan. And eliminating the requirements of footnote six, which requires compliance with one ninety dash thirty one and footnote seven of table two of the bylaw. And G, any other reductions or alterations from the requirements of one ninety thirty two D and table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow the project to be constructed as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. Furthermore, the board determines that
Washington setting a date for Donald Trump's trial on charges he tried to overturn the twenty twenty election, March fourth, just. Back in the middle of the presidential campaign.
I continue. Furthermore, the board determines that the two buildings on the property are attached. So that the fifty-foot minimum distance between buildings requirement under one ninety dash thirty-two is not applicable. Same findings as the last special permit, and furthermore, these reductions and or alterations will enhance the project as all and allow it to be. Uh, beneficial to the neighborhood in which it is situated, and again, based on the same conditions already presented. That is the motion.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That is also unanimously approved.
Next motion, I move that we grant a special permit pursuant to one ninety, section one ninety dash thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. Reducing the requirements of the standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw as follows. A, section one ninety thirty-seven C, reducing the required size of some of the parking spaces to allow the parking spaces as shown on the final site plan. B, section one ninety thirty-seven D of the bylaw, reducing the required width of the aisles to allow the aisles as shown on the final site plan. C, one, section one ninety thirty-seven E one of the bylaw, reducing the required setback. Of off-street parking areas to allow them to be closer than seven point five feet to the building, as shown on the final site plan. And eliminating the requirement that open parking spaces shall be separated from the street line by a landscape strip not less than fifteen feet in width. Item D, section one ninety thirty-seven F of the bylaw, eliminating the requirement for screening. E, section one ninety thirty-seven I one, allowing the driveways serving parking facilities to exceed thirty feet in width at the street line. And to be spaced closer than a hundred feet to another driveway, serving the same lot as shown on the final site plan. And F, section one ninety forty B, eliminating the requirement for screening pursuant to section one ninety thirty-one G of the bylaw. G, section one ninety forty-one, reducing the number of required parking spaces pursuant to one ninety forty-one. Table three of the bylaw to a total of twenty-eight parking spaces for the twenty residential units and the restaurant use. H, any other necessary reductions in the requirements and or standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw. Related to the project as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. For findings, the board finds that the application of the standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven. Proves to be infeasible and the reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility due to lack of suitable land, design considerations, or other similar factors. The granting of such special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, or welfare of the neighborhood, or the district, or of the town. Furthermore, the board determined that the location of the structure will not restrict visibility in such a way as to hinder. The safe entry or exit of a vehicle from any driveway to the street, or restrict visibility at a corner of two streets. And again, based on the conditions already presented. And that is the motion.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, uh, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yeah.
And I vote yes.
And finally, um, I make a motion that we, um, grant a finding under one ninety fifty B of the bylaw. Then any changes, extensions, alterations to any pre-existing non-conforming building structures or uses resulting from the project. Including but not limited to any existing non-compliance with the requirements of section one ninety thirty-one G of the bylaw. And any changes, extensions, or alterations of the same are not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformities to the neighborhood. And as with findings, there's no conditions here, um, and that is the motion.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, same voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yeah.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the, appreciate the process. All the input is gonna make it a great project. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, moving on. Next up, cases twenty-three thirty-nine, twenty-three forty, twenty-three forty-one, and twenty-three forty-two. New Creek LLC located at ten Broadway. Leave this one, Joe, as to Mr.?
It is, it is, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, Attorney Brian McGreal here on behalf of New Creek LLC. Uh, in the property at ten Broadway. Uh, similar to the last project, I think, um, we're hoping that this project is at the end of the line. Uh, we had a couple of final homework assignments on this. Um, in particular, uh, the parking situation that the board was concerned about. Uh, that I had provided a, um, a solution, um, as far as a condition goes, and. I was charged with writing that up and then, uh, presenting it to Board Member, uh, McIntosh. Um, and to work with him on wordsmithing it. So I had sent you a draft of that in the revised conditions Friday. And since then, Greg and I have had an opportunity to meet and, uh, go back and forth a little bit. And so that, that condition as I presented it, uh, was wordsmith, and Greg had a couple of comments on, on, uh, other conditions, so. In that regard, Mr. Chair, if I could, uh, bring that up and kind of show you the, uh, red lines of the changes from what was presented to the board. Uh, what was discussed at the last meeting and presented to the board, um, on Friday.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Great. I put a revision date of yesterday because that's when Greg and I finished, uh, finished our review up and discussion. Um, and, um. So, you know, these, these, um, conditions have all been presented at the last meeting. So, you know, the changes are what I am gonna, I'm gonna focus on, if it's okay with you. Um, so, uh, the first one was Greg kind of didn't like the way that we had referenced passive, non-recreational. In that open gathering space. And quite frankly, the, the thing I was really trying to get at is I just didn't want it to become a skate park. Um, so that's why I put the word, um, you know, I kind of like the word passive. And, and then I just, instead of just saying non-recreational, we just said with no recreational activities such as skateboarding. Because we don't want members of the public to say, hey, you have a condition, it's got to be open to the public, we can do whatever we want there. And then it becomes a nuisance not only for the residents, but for the town and the other public residents that are using it. So that was that change.
That, Brian, is I guess what I was going at is, you know, with no recreational activities, you and I had talked about on the other. On the parking requirements, you know, people could twist language, recreational activities is essentially anything that's. You're not getting paid for, you know, it's non-professional. So recreational activity could be sitting there reading a book. You don't want, you know, uh, uh, someone saying, well, you, you're reading a book, that's a recreational activity, you can't be here.
Yeah.
I think passive is probably, pa, you know. If you want to beef it up, I don't think recreational is the right word.
Uh, I, I mean, I, I'm fine with that, Greg, if you, and, and I know what you're saying, I, I get it.
I know you don't want a football game or skateboarding, any of that type of stuff.
So maybe we just go with is, uh, in the public as a passive gathering space.
Yeah, and, and I'm okay even keeping the, you know, such as skateboarding or some, something like that in there. Because I, I completely understand what you're getting at, but I don't want it to be twisted that, you know, someone says, you know, you're not just making your way through. Get out of here, you can't read a book here. That works for me, yeah.
Good, good point, well taken. Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. Okay, so then I had presented language and then Greg had made some red lines and, and we talked. We actually met on Zoom and, and he kind of gave me an assignment. And we went back and, and we really, I, you know, I think it's, you know, it's a better condition than I presented at the end of the day. Um, and I think it's more concise, tighter. And really gathers the spirit of what the board is trying to do, especially you, Mr. Chair, you had mentioned that your goal is to have kind of a. Uh, kind of a, um, a stick, if you will, that. You know, if it becomes out of control, that you can say, hey, you know, we want to know what's going on here and we have a right to know, and you're not complying, so. Um, so, um. Um, have, I don't know if you want to go about this, if you'd like me to read it, I can, or let you read it, or Greg can comment on it, how, how would you like me to go, Mr. Chair, on this?
Why don't you walk us through it, um, quickly, and then we'll have Greg make any comments, and then we'll open it up to the rest.
Basically, what we're doing in the opening paragraph is we're, we're defining what the park, we're creating the parking space requirement. That has to be complied with. So it says each unit shall be rented or assigned a separate parking space. For each individual motor vehicle owned, leased, or used on a regular basis by any occupant of that unit. Um, and this covers, so this covers ownership, lease, or, you know, ride, you know, if they just, you know, basically whatever, just, you know, use it, borrow, borrow. Cop from a friend. And Greg brought up a good point that it should be on a regular basis, because if somebody has a cop for a weekend, you don't want to have to, you know, have them included on this. Um, so, and then, and then we added to it from what I had, and we said tenant shall be required to notify the applicant. On an ongoing basis of any changes to the occupant's ownership, lease, or use of motor vehicles. Including if an occupant or their unit purchases, or I'm sorry, including if the occupant of their unit. Uh, purchases, leases, or uses on a regular basis any additional vehicles that would require an additional parking space. Or spaces hereunder. So this is the defined term of parking requirement, parking space requirement. And then what we thought, you know, I always say, you know, people like to try to do end runs, we all know that, so. The way I was taught to avoid that, to avoid any confusion is give examples. So you really get the spirit of what's, what's, what's happening here. So then we put thus by way of examples, and Greg astutely wanted to add. And not intended to be limiting in any way. Uh, but, so in, I'll go over a couple of the examples. So if a unit has one person residing in the unit. And they own, lease, or use on a regular basis one motor vehicle, there shall be one parking space rented or assigned to that unit. If a unit has one person residing in the unit and they own, lease, or use on a regular basis. Two motor vehicles, there should be two parking spaces rented or assigned to that unit. If a unit has two people residing in the unit, and the, and combined, they own, lease, or use on a regular basis. Zero motor vehicles, then there is no requirement for any parking space to be rented or assigned to that unit. If a unit has two people residing in the unit and combined, they own, lease, or use on a regular basis. Three motor vehicles, there shall be three parking spaces rented or assigned to that unit. If the unit has three people residing in the unit, and combined, they own, lease, or use on a regular basis three motor vehicles, there should be. Three parking spaces rented or assigned to that unit. And lastly, if a unit has three people residing in the unit and combined, they own, lease, or use on a regular basis. Two motor vehicles, there shall be two parking spaces rented or assigned to that unit. So that really kind of, you know, gives examples of what we're doing here. That's, that, that really locks in what we mean by parking space requirement. Um, and then we go on and we, we basically say to the applicant. My client that, you know, when you rent, you've got to notify people this, so it, the condition says the applicant shall notify prospective tenants. In writing of the parking space requirement prior to them, uh, prior to entering any lease for any unit. Said notice shall be signed by the prospective tenant to acknowledge receipt of the same. So we're defining this as the parking space requirement notices. So they're giving notice, so somebody's not going to say, I didn't know about that requirement when I rented my unit. Um. And then we put this provision in. The parking space requirement, which is not the notice, but the main requirement, shall also be included as a requirement in every written lease of a unit. And a lease will provide that failure of the tenant to comply with the parking space requirement shall constitute a default under the terms of the lease by the tenant. So, you know, it's pretty strong teeth in here to a tenant, you know, you better not violate this, or you're in default, you're out. Um, and then this is the, the parking, uh, eight parking spaces for visitors. Eight of the parking spaces shown on the, shown as visitor spaces on the site plan shall always remain visitor parking spaces. And these parking spaces that are not rented or assigned to a unit shall be made available as additional visitor parking spaces. Until such time as they may be rented or assigned to a unit. The additional visitor parking spaces shall be marked as such with removable signage. A sample of which shall be approved by the board pursuant to condition number fourteen above. That was Greg, he wanted to add that, you know, the temporary, we're gonna have to have temporary signage for those parking spaces because they're gonna fluctuate. So, you know, your board would approve what we're gonna use for temporary signage. Now, I also want to point out, in the operation and maintenance plan that was, that was submitted, we included provisions for the gate. Which I'll, I'll, I'll bring that up afterwards, Mr. Chair, just to kind of walk you through that and make sure you're comfortable with that, because. As you know, there's a gate here, and then in those additional visitor parking spaces will be beyond the gate, so there has to be provisions. To get those visitors beyond the gate so they can use them. Um, okay. So now, this kind of gets into the teeth of it. So the applicant shall maintain a record of the following collectively, the parking compliance information. A, the signed parking space requirement notices, so when they get them signed by the prospective tenants, they've got to keep them. B, a plan showing the number of each parking space. Um, that reflects how they are numbered on the ground. Um. Let me see here, hold on a second. Greg, did I miss something? We had a, oh, I, I did I say that at the beginning, all parking spaces shall be numbered? I'm gonna skip that, that's at the top here, you see it?
Yep.
Okay, because that kind of coincides, because if we're gonna assign parking spaces and we're gonna be able to audit it, you need to, you know, they need to have numbers. So, um, so basically, the parking compliance information is the signed parking space requirement notices. B, a plan showing the number of each parking space that reflects how they are numbered on the ground. C, a list or inventory of each motor vehicle, including year, make, model, and license plate number. Own, leased, or used on a regular basis by occupants of all the units. D, the designated parking space number of each parking space rented or assigned to each unit. So those are the records that they have to keep. And then if your board sees or says, you know what, there's a problem, or, or the building inspector does. Then they can come in within ten days of a written request from the board of the building inspector, the applicant shall provide. The parking space compliance information to the requesting party. And the applicants shall allow the requesting party access to the property to confirm compliance with this condition. So you will be able to go in and spot check and say, hey, parking space twenty-one, you know, these three were assigned to these units, they should have. These three vehicles associated with those parking spaces, why aren't they there? I really think that, you know, this could be a model, I think it's a, it's, 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 um, I think it really captures, Mr. Chair, what you, what you were trying to do.
Greg, do you want to add anything? And appreciate your, uh, work on this as well.
No, Brian went pretty in-depth, I think it, it functions the way, um, he presented at the last meeting, but adds a little bit of, um. Sort of, uh, monitoring and, and oversight. Uh, so I, I don't think he missed anything. Like he said, uh, he and I spoke yesterday and then emailed back and forth this morning. Uh, so no, nothing really substantive yet.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jim, I see a hand up.
Yeah, um, I guess the question is, on the visitor's side. Say a visitor, uh, one, we can think of a visitor coming in for a few hours and stopping. But wonder if they're staying over for a week or three days, how do we, how is that handled?
We'll have to use visitor spaces.
Yeah, but I mean, is there a limitation as to how long someone can stay there? I mean, they might be there a month.
Well, I think that's, I don't think, I don't think my client's gonna let people, you know, Donnie, my, Donnie, maybe you can address that. I think you probably have something in your lease that people can't just bring other, other residents in, they're gonna use all your water and your services, right?
Yes, typically, we have a limit on how, how long overnight guests can stay, it's. We, we don't have anything set for this one, but, um, it's, uh, generally not more than a week.
And then I think that also goes to the language of the, it's, it's any occupant of a, uh. The language in the, in the conditions is any occupant used on a regular basis. I think if it's a month, that's clearly an occupant is using something on a regular basis, so they're. They're violation.
Well, maybe, maybe it needs to be sort of outlined in their lease, and maybe it is, I don't know, but.
This whole thing is gonna be in the lease. I said that in the, in the language.
That's right.
Well, that, this whole, the, the appropriate language from this condition will be in the lease.
I understand, um, but as Donnie has already said, they don't, they don't allow anybody there more than a week, so. Assumingly, that's in their lease as well to directly apply, just like. It says you've got to have a parking space, you're gonna pay for it, if you've got a car. Then, you know, guests are limited as to how long they can stay.
I don't think we want to go there with our condition. This, this is. The most extensive condition I've ever seen around parking.
Yeah, it's thorough.
And everyone's agreed to it, so I'm not gonna get in the middle of it, this is the most extensive parking condition I've ever seen, but if. If anyone's on board with it, I know you discussed it, it, it linked last meeting, and Greg, you worked on this with, with the applicant, um. I just, I, I don't know how much farther we can take.
I just, I, I don't know how much farther we can take it. As long as this stuff goes into the O and M plan or the lease agreement, you know, so it gets applied and enforced. Fine. The applicant's willing to do that. You know, fine, fine by me. I think we've done our due diligence here. Yeah. So I, um, I have, um, I just wanted to show you the O and M plan, um. That, uh, it kind of goes with this because this is something that Chip wanted this in the, um, O and M plan. Um, let me see here. Hang on a second, I just got to grab it, bring it all up. I just had to grab it from my, uh, other computer coming now. What I did is to deal with that, with the, with, with this whole thing is on the O and M plan on the parking. I'll read this. I added the striping in numbers of the parking spaces, directional markings in the labeling of the visitor parking spaces. Shall be maintained and redone as needed. So they always may remain clearly visible because. Maintenance on the numbers of the parking spaces is going to be critical, uh, for the parking plan. Um, the parking gate, the parking lot gate system shall be inspected on a yearly basis and fixed and adjusted as needed to always be kept in good working order. Residents shall be able to operate the parking lot gates via radio frequency identification type device to be provided to all. The residents for their vehicles. Visitor access to any visitor parking spaces available inside the parking lot gates. Shall be via a system that allows visitors to contact residents directly utilizing their smartphone to lift the gates. For them to obtain entry indoor exit. So if, if some of those parking spaces, those extra parking spaces are beyond the gates. Uh, they can call up to get the gate opened and, 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 uh, to get access. And then any necessary repairs, replacements to the above listed components shall be made. To always keep them in good operating and aesthetic condition, a record of inspections and repairs will be maintained at the property. This is pretty much the condition that you had on the Crescent Crescent, uh, app project for access for visitors.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, hearing none, let's move on.
Right. So those are the conditions. And then, uh, I'm going to hand it over to John Ogren for a minute to show, we made a couple of revisions to the. Um, to the, uh, site plan. And, um. Uh, John's going to show those to you. And I'm going to send you, Mr. Chair, the, uh, revised O and M. Um, I, I think I just looked at my record. I don't think I sent that to you on Friday. I apologize. Um, I just read it to you, but I don't think I sent it. I think I, um, inadvertently omitted that from the email. So I'm going to send it to you now for the record.
Okay.
Go ahead, John, if you could.
Hi, good evening. Um, if I could share my screen real quick. Uh, the changes that were made to the final plan that is dated, um, September twenty-second. Uh, they're very minor in nature. Essentially two of them. There was a comment was, uh, came up last. Meeting about, uh, in the legend, they called out CC, which stood for concrete curb. Um, in the existing condition, there is a small section of concrete curb along the back here, which, um, will be removed. Uh, the legends were updated on all the other sheets that were showing the proposed conditions. And that abbreviation has been eliminated. Um, the other change to the plan, whoop, sorry. Um. If you call, originally we had sixteen, um, electric vehicle spaces inside, uh, the parking garage. Uh, suggest that we move some of the spaces outside. So we moved six of the spaces, um, outdoors. And then that remain, the remaining ten will be in the parking garage. And that's essentially the, um, the site plan changes.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Anything else, Brian?
No, sir.
Anything, anything else from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to open up the public comment. Anyone here is. Wants to comment on this case or these cases, please raise your hand in Zoom. Seeing none, uh, we will close public comment. Letter of the board.
So Mr. Chair, as with the last hearing, uh, I think we're covered, um. Through October thirty-first to render a decision on this one. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, so as with the last one, I, I think it'd be prudent to, uh. Request an extension for, uh, the time for the board to render and file that decision. Why don't we use the same date of November seventeenth? Is that amenable?
It is.
All right. So I would make a motion that, um. We, we accept in, in, uh, the time to extend, uh, this board to render a decision to November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay. So the motions, uh, that I will, um. Proposed are based on the final site plan by Hayes Engineering dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three that we just saw. The final architectural plans by Cube Three Architects dated September eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the final landscape plan. By James Emanuel dated August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. And based on, on the conditions, uh, that we were, uh, shown earlier and up as updated. So first I would make a motion that we grant a special permit and site plan approval. Pursuant to section one ninety-three-two and one ninety-four-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. Allowing a hundred and six unit mid-rise apartment as shown on the final site plan, final architectural plans, and final landscape plan. This motion is based on the findings. As set forth here, item A, the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations. As requiring a special permit in the district for which the application is made. B, the requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. There is a dire need for housing, including affordable housing in the town of Wakefield and the surrounding area. C, the requested use will not create or add to undue traffic condition or unduly impair pedestrian safety. D, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system. For such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town. Will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general, the general welfare. E, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district. Or adjoining districts nor be detrimental to the public health, convenience, or welfare. F, the requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of that. Particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. This use will put a vacated and blighted property to a beneficial use and add to the affordable housing inventory. G, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and it will not adversely affect the zoning district. Furthermore, the non-residential uses permitted in the zoning district are not noxious to the residential use. As well, the board has reviewed the section of the bylaw one ninety-four-five. Which in pertinent part states that in reviewing a site plan, the special permit granting authority. And the other applicable agencies shall consider, among other things, the following. One, the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, properties, or improvements. Two, adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage, refuse, and other waste, and the methods for surface and stormwater drainage. Three, provision of off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the servicing of the buildings. And related uses on the lot or track. The board has considered all of the above referenced criteria and findings and is satisfied. And this is all based on the conditions as presented. That is the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip? Chip, you're muted.
Sorry. Yes.
And, uh, I'm voting.
Doing well so far.
I'm voting no. So it passes four to one. Next up.
Okay. I make a motion that we grant a special permit pursuant to one ninety-three-two-one. Of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing reductions and or alterations to dimensional requirements under section one ninety-three-two-D. And table two of the bylaw related to a hundred and six unit mid-rise apartment as shown on the final site plan. Final architectural plans and final landscape plan, including the following. A, allowing lot width of one hundred and thirty-one point eight-eight feet as shown on the final site plan. B, allowing a reduction in the required front and side setbacks to be that as shown on the final site plan. C, allowing open area of twenty-eight point eight percent as shown on the final site plan. D, allowing a maximum height of fifty-four point one-three feet as shown on the final site plan and architectural plans. And E, any other reductions and or alterations from the requirements of section one ninety-three-two-D and table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. To allow the project to be constructed as shown on the final site plan, final architectural plans, and final landscape plan. Same findings as the last special permit and furthermore, these reductions and alterations. Will enhance the multifamily project as a whole and allow it to benefit the neighborhood in which it is situated. And this too is based on the conditions already presented. That is the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, same voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I'm a no. Passes four to one. Next, Dave?
I make a motion that we grant a special permit pursuant to section one ninety-three-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. Reducing the requirements of the standards of off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw as follows. A, one, section one ninety-three-seven E two, eliminating the landscaping requirements stated therein. B, any other reduc, necessary reductions in the requirements. Under standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw related to the project as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. This is based on findings. The board has found that the application of the standards for off-street parking. And loading under article seven proves to be infeasible and the reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility. Due to lack of suitable land, design considerations, or other similar factors. The granting of such special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, or welfare of the neighborhood or the district or of the town. Furthermore, the board determined that the location of the structure will not restrict visibility in such a way as to hinder the safe entry or exit. Of a vehicle from any driveway to the street or to restrict visibility at the corner of two streets. And this, um, motion is also based on the same conditions already presented.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote no. Will we have one more, Dave?
We do. We have a motion to grant a variance from the requirements or standard or standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven. Of the Wakefield zoning bylaw as follows. Section one ninety-three-seven E one of the bylaw, reducing the required setback of off-street parking areas. To allow them to be closer than seven point five feet to the building as shown on the final site plan. And eliminating the requirement that open parking spaces shall be separated from the street land by a landscape strip not less than fifteen feet in width. B, section one ninety-three-seven E two, eliminating the landscaping requirements stated therein. C, any other necessary reductions in the requirements for standards of off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw. Related to the project as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. In terms of findings. Um, related to variances, as the board knows, unusual circumstances affecting land or structures. Um, the property currently houses a large box-shaped building used as a fitness center and is a split zone lot which necessitates this variance. The existing building will be razed and the project will result in a cleanup and revitalization that will be a benefit to the property and the neighborhood. This situation provides a unique circumstance related to the land and the structures. In terms of hardship, the board finds that the application of the standards of off-street parking and loading. Under article seven of the bylaw proves to be infeasible and the reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility. Due to access and egress limitations and design considerations. And in terms of substantial detriment and derogation, the board finds that the request of relief can be granted without. Substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. And this motion is also made on the same conditions already presented.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, same voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip? Chip, you're muted again.
Sorry. Yes.
And I vote no. That, that too is approved with a four to one vote.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Very much appreciate the process.
Yeah, I want to thank the members of board, Jim and, and Greg, and I know a lot of people did a lot of work on this. So I appreciate all the effort that went into it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, moving along. Next case, case is, case is twenty-three forty-three, twenty-three forty-four. Twenty-three forty-five, twenty-three forty-six, twenty-three forty-seven, twenty-three forty-eight, twenty-three forty-nine. And twenty-three fifty, Granite Family Realty Trust LLC located at three fourteen, three thirty, three thirty-six Salem Street.
Great. Uh, for the record, Mr. Chair, attorney Brian McGreal representing the applicant, uh, Granite's Family Trust LLC. Uh, Jim Cook and Bill Mandelar on here, uh, as is John Ogren. Um, I don't know, uh, Jim, is Andy on or no? I don't think he is tonight.
I don't see him.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't anticipate him, but I didn't want to, uh, omit him if he, if he was here. Um, so, uh, just a couple of up, uh, at least one update and John, I'm going to maybe catch you off guard here, but. Um, you know, the, you know, the drainage plan that you did, John? And you sent around, can you share that? Is that something that you, you can put your fingers on or you want me to look for it?
Um, yeah, you'd have to give me, give me one second. I, I didn't bring that one over.
No problem. Want to let the board know what's going on with that and, and some of the neighbors. Think I got it, John. I got it.
I had, I just copied it over.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was able to find it. So the last meeting, um, and this will be interesting, uh, to some of the neighbors and it's been, I think it's been shared. Um, and we sent it to Bill Renault, he's reviewing it, but as you recall, you know, some of the folks on Mitchell Lane. And you know, they're having some drainage issues. So what we had talked about was trying to find ways to get the, the back in this area in the back of our property. In a budding properties is where this water problem is. It affects Kevin Gill's property, his pools here. It affects some of the other neighbors. So we're trying to help with this process to, 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 um. Uh, contribute to it and to find solutions is, you know, kind of being a good neighbor and as part of the project. If we can help, we, we will. So one of the things that we, we needed to do, um, um, is we talked last time. The town, uh, cambered the pipes to, you know, find out where they went. The town has determined that we need to be able to get a pipe to the back of our property and possibly beyond. And then to be able to get it through out to the town drainage system. So we're looking for a path that that could happen. And John, uh, as we've mentioned, um. Hayes, uh, my clients, uh, had Hayes and paid for them to do the survey work out there to find out the paths with, you know, they would meet up with the town pipes and. Actually, the good news is, there's actually three possibilities of doing this. Um, one is to. is to run the pipe from our property and and we would provide an easement and it would be a condition of our approval that we talked about. And run it across the neighbor's property, um, this property at fourteen Unis along their sideline right out to Unis where there is drainage. Uh, the other option would be to partially run it down their property and then run it over the folks at Eight Mitchell out to the drainage system there. And if all else fails, there's a way to run this potentially through Kevin Gill's property. Uh, and bring it through his property and then do some drainage work to extend the drainage that doesn't exist in in Mitchell Lane. So, um, you know, as part of our process, we'll, John will be talking to Bill Renault. Um, as I said, we can't be the save-all, but we can help. And we're willing to help as part of our project. The help would be in the form of, um, you know, we've already done this work, any additional work that John can do to help on survey work with Bill. Um, a financial contribution to to resolve this. And then also, um, to give an easement on our property, which is critical to be able to get that easement because if an easement doesn't happen on our property to get beyond um, where it's needed, then it's it's kind of, that's it. The process is over. So that's a status on that. I think it's good news. Um, the other issue that we talked about at the last meeting is um that we were gonna go back with Jim McBane and our team uh to see what we could do as far as height of the building goes. Um, currently under our zone, uh, currently, um, 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 you know, you know, the board has had um some concerns with the height um as far as is how it relates to the area. Um, so what we did is we we looked at this in a combination of ways and we looked at the possibility of lowering the building. And there's issues with doing that. And John, can you maybe explain to the board the, you know, the the difficulties that, and we are, we are able to lower the building a little bit, um, but um we're limited in that. And John, maybe you can explain to the board the limitations that we're facing as far as grade and drainage and sewage.
Yeah, um, the two, the two biggest things would be the the sewer and the drainage. Um, we need to tie into uh existing sewer that's, uh, there's a manhole right off our property and to get into the town sewer. If we lower the um garage grade, the garage floor too far, um, becomes an issue because a parking garage like that requires um floor drains that tie into a gas trap which eventually discharges to the sewer. So it kind of limited in terms of elevation of the garage floor based on the existing um sewer that we need to tie into. The other issue is uh drainage. If we, if we lower the the self, the garage floor too um low, then we start to bring water that again, existing condition goes out to Salem Street. We're now pulling that back onto the property. Uh, and as Brian showed, you know, we're trying to um alleviate some drainage issues towards the rear of the property. We certainly don't want to bring anymore. It also um creates some, some difficulty in getting the remaining water from the front of the site to the rear of the property. Um, there is some grade difference from the front to the back. However, we're limited as far as what we can do um in terms of infrastructure in the residential zone. So um, looking at that, um, and to try to keep the water going out to Salem Street, being able to tie into the the sewer and to uh make the drainage work. Uh, we were able to we believe we were able to lower the garage floor about a foot and a half.
So thank you, John. So that that explains it. So we're not saying we can't do anything. We can. We can get it down about a foot and a half. And then the other thing that we we had a meeting and Jim McBane participated in this, we talked to our architect. Um, and um, he's gonna be able, he's currently, the building has nine-foot-high ceilings in the units. So what we're, what my clients are willing to do, that's kind of what people want, but they're willing to lower the height of the ceilings to just over eight feet. Um, so we're, you know, we're probably gonna end up. Um, I forget what he said, Jim Cook, maybe it was like eight-two or eight-six, I forget what it was, but the combined.
Around there.
Around there, Jim, right? You you were there. So, so at the end of the day, we feel comfortable that we're gonna be able to reduce the height of this building uh just by adjustments uh by uh at least three feet. From what where it is now, which is not, not not, not a lot. I mean, that's a, it's a lot of effort. It's gonna, it's gonna be uh a lot of engineering for John to do, to do that, um, and we are willing to do it. Um. Quite honestly, that's the best we can do. We vetted this with Jim McBane. Um, we looked at all other options. We can't lower the building for the reasons John said. Um, we can't, we can't lose a floor. It's just totally economically not feasible at that point. And this project will go away and something else will come in its place. Um, but that's where we are. So we're, we're hopeful that that is is adequate for the board. Um, and if it is, then we are, you know, ready to proceed with our our new work. Uh, because in order to do, accomplish what I just said, there's gonna be a lot of, lot more money, time and effort spent in the engineering and the architectural plans. It's in essence, gonna have to be a redesign of uh of the building, which we're, again, we're happy to do. They, my clients want to do this project. They want to move forward. Um, I think you know that they've been, um, you know, really, you know, uh, Jim and Bill did the prop project down at five eighty-one Salem. It was meticulously built. There was not one complaint during the construction of that. When the board went out for their site visit to sign off, they were done, completed. No, uh, hey, can we have a temporary this or a temporary that? Nope, full sign off and done. So these guys know what they're doing. They're good builders. They're good developers that you want in your area. And, you know, they're ready to, and i- as they, as is evidenced by their working uh relationship with the neighbors out back. They delayed this process by by about uh four months to deal with that drainage out back. And they, and they've done it in good faith. They spent money a lot of money already on that. And, you know, if the project does go away, it's already, they've given a benefit to the people back there by the engine, by the engineering, but they're willing to do more. Uh, if the project goes forward. So I would respectfully suggest to the board that compared to what is there today. Um, and I know you don't always operate that by that, but and also compared to what might go there if this does go away, that the good faith effort of this and in the three feet is pretty significant. You know, we're looking for a green light to say, yeah, let's move forward, go, you know, there's gotta be more redesign. We have to work with Jim still on um on fine tuning it, but that's gonna work as far as the height goes.
So Brian, so Brian, um, my object basically was in this last meeting, since we hadn't had one for considerable amount of time, was really to understand what the physical restrictions were, which John has already outlined. And the, as noted, the art, as we discussed more about ceiling heights and what they proposed, since we don't, we did not know that until we questioned the architect as to what they were gonna be. Did we fall upon that idea as well? But I think one thing you've left out was that we talked also about the retaining wall in the front and how to mitigate some of the height and differential there. And I think the architect was gonna look into that as well.
Correct.
Not, but really, as you point out, the best they can do seems like a three-foot um, uh, pushing this building down into the grade and maybe something outside with the retaining wall at this point.
And we talked about some potentially depending on the power lines, the street trees, Jim, too. That really, you know, that, you know, we we can go back on the landscaping component to this and try to add it in the front.
But that, at the end of the, at the end of the day, for this particular exercise, basically, it was understanding what the restrictions were, which were alluded to at the previous meeting some months ago, which none of, which was sort of noted to some degree by John, but he didn't have the factual information. So now we have the factual information as well as some additional option on this building. So I, I said, as I said in the meeting the other day, it's time for you all to come back and present what I've already heard. And for, to get more direction from the board at this point. Uh, I'm not saying it's done. Uh, I just wanna have people present the factual information to understand what the limitations are. That's, um, I'm sure Greg will have something to say on this, but um I think we're at a point where now we have all additional factual information and the fact that we know what's possible.
Yeah, but just one thing to add to that, you know, and Andy said this, you know, three feet is not three feet is a decent amount and it's gonna have impacts, not just on the look of the building, but it's gonna like reduce the height of those steps that come out the front. So i- i- it's gonna have it's gonna have an impact, a positive impact on on the implications. It's uh, you know, I think the, I think the elevation was like forty-two feet, the height, the height in this dis- well, the height in the business district out front is, you know, sixty feet, but um but if you look at it as a residential district, because you have residents around it, that would normally be thirty-five feet. And, you know, at the end of the day, we're not that far off. Because we're now gonna bring it below forty.
Brian, I I think I might have mentioned the height also, um. But I also remember thinking about the house to the right. I I think that one sits up high also, so. I think bringing it down three feet will adjust the height to the, the house around it to the right. I also I remember, it's been a long time, but I remember when you opened up to the public, a lot of the neighbors didn't really mention anything about the height. I I believe the lady across the street was for the project. So sometimes when I look at these projects, I always think about the neighbors and if they don't have a problem with the height, then I mean, they're the ones right next door. So I don't, I think three feet is significant. Um, I appreciate, you know, you guys looking into that. Um, also, if you're gonna fix the drainage, I mean, that's a, that's a win-win also, you know?
Well, let's not use the word fix. Aid and assist in the drainage, because I don't know if the drainage can ever be fixed. But can certainly be assisted. So I really appreciate that Jim has now ventured into landscaping design. Uh. So Brian, I have lots of thoughts on the front. Um, one is to not use traditional block, but to you, uh, or some of the new retaining wall crap. But to go back to an old field stone, you know, make this look like it's been there forever. And to tier it, whether it's one, two, or three tiers, but to allow planting as as Jim often speaks in his architectural tone to let it, you know, grow into the neighborhood or you know, come up into the neighborhood. This would come off the street. I was, I was always distraught with the hard wall against the sidewalk. But if you bring it down a little bit and you tier this in and do real, you know, extensive planting so that it feel, you know, that it really feels like it's been there for a long time and very traditional New England stone wall. Full planting along the roadway, I think it can go a long way.
Hey, anybody else?
If I could just ask, Mr. Chair, Jim Cook or Bill, is that something we could probably look at with the landscape architect, right?
Uh, we, we can look at it and see if it's something that is doable there.
Well, you've got fifteen feet of a setback. You're building it all up.
I think we did.
Creating this wall, you're creating the dirt in front of the building. You can do whatever you want.
I think we did explore the idea of of doing um tiers there. And I don't wanna misspeak, but I think that was, that created a challenge somewhere. Uh, Jim, you may have actually been in the meeting when we did that. But we we can, we can, we can look into it and um and definitely evaluate that.
Yeah, Chip, if there's a way to do it, we'll do it.
Yeah, we don't have an objection to it. Make sure it's doable.
Yeah, wait, so I'm, I'm, so the the differential between the street and the first floor now is what?
John?
Yeah, John.
Yeah, I'm mute, John.
Yeah, um, let me just pull up the site plan. So from you talking about the the first, what I'm calling is the first floor, not the garage floor.
First floor, yeah. Living floor.
Yeah, so that's about ninety-two. Um. One oh. Yeah, I mean, from, from the street to our top wall, it was it's, we had one oh three five, so that was about five and a half feet. And then it was about another not quite five feet to the first floor grade. So a total of just over ten.
Almost ten feet from the road up to the first floor?
Correct.
Did you say it was?
No, is it?
How can that, how can that be? That means you're setting the parking garage to zero? That at ninety-eight, you're not resetting the parking garage at all?
Right now, the parking garage is ninety-eight.
And the road's ninety-eight?
Correct.
Well, you're not setting, you're not, you're not lowering the parking garage at all. So you're filling in the entire foundation from first floor to roadway in fifteen feet or whatever your front yard setback is.
Well, I'm picking, I'm picking, the ninety-eight is about the middle of the building. Where the driveway comes in, it's down around um ninety-seven, elevation ninety-seven at the back edge of sidewalk. So it's about a foot from the back of the sidewalk to um, and that's where it gets really tricky, how we're gonna grade that to uh allow that to continue to flow out toward Salem Street.
And what's your, and what's your invert at for the sewer?
Um, the sewer is down at ninety-three.
So you've got five feet, don't you, to play with? I I can't figure out why you can't drop it.
No, no, uh, we're, we're taking a foot and a half off, so now I only have three and a half feet. You get a slab, then you have all the drainage, you have to pitch all the drainage to, from there through a gas um, the gas trap, we lose about three or four inches. So by the time you get there, is it, you'll use up that that elevation difference.
We're, Chip, we're happy to go as low as we can. Well, you know, if we're going.
Yeah, I'm just not, I'm, I'm, I I'm happy to look at it offline. I'm not convinced we're getting as low as you can. And to have the, to have the garage elevation equal to the road elevation is the issue. If you've got it, yeah.
Well, we can vet that with you and we're, you know, we're.
And why can't, and why can't we do a pump there? To get the ground elevation lower.
I mean, a pump is, you know, a pump is an option certainly for um the garage.
Correct.
The the floor, the.
The garage, the floor, the garage is the issue.
Right, but the issue starts to become you lower the garage below the street, now you have water coming basically from Salem Street, direction of Salem Street into that garage. And now that.
And you do it, you do a little bump or hump in the driveway. I mean, you can keep the road, you can keep the road water, the road water and the field water, the field water. I mean,
And I know.
You've separated that a thousand times.
Right, but we're creating a, a basically a bathtub. Now I need to get that water.
Yeah, with a, with a pump.
I I I'm not, pumping for the the garage floor drains is something that we could look into. Pumping for surface water coming off of a driveway, that's not, that's not really a good engineering design.
Chip, I don't wanna speak out, but a a lot of, I know a lot of inspectors hate pumps, because if they fail, you're in a lot of trouble. They just, they don't, they don't, they don't wanna rely on pumps. They wanna rely on gravity. I've been through this with inspectors many times.
Well, I mean, I think it's, I think it's as simple as this. What we're saying is we can lower it a foot and a half. If we can, if 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 we can, we're happy, Chip, to have you involved. We can lower it more, we will, but, you know, John, we don't wanna represent something tonight that we don't think we can do, but we're happy to look at it, you know, further.
I mean, I I I have looked at this and I really believe that that's without having to pump surface strange water, which you really don't wanna do because again, you're dealing with um main events that it's, it's very hard to anticipate how much water you're gonna get. Um. And in looking at all this, without, if I load any further than that, then we're gonna have to look to somehow pump. the surface water from this lower area towards the back of the, towards the back of the property.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that, because they've already got problems back there.
Right, and that's, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly happy to, to go over the, the design in, in more detail. But uh, we, I did look at this, I did look at all the elevations. Um, and I really feel it, any, going any lower than, I didn't even wanna go a foot and a half, but they talked me into it.
We did have this discussion the other day, basically on pumps. And um, I think, John, you had indicated even a bigger problem than the garage is the, is the parking behind the building and how that gets drained off. Right, that couldn't end up to be a big puddle in itself, and at the same time, um, cause problems.
Right, and, uh, you know, maybe if you lowered the um, the building, we may end up starting to look at where it starts to get the parking in the rear of the building is, you know, say, two feet above the actual um floor grade, so that you need to, you're gonna come off the parking, go back either down or up, and it's just gonna be very, a very odd entrance to the building.
What, what's your, what's, what's your ceiling height in the garage, John?
That, that I don't know offhand.
Okay, so the other question, you have outside parking and under the building parking, right?
Yes.
So what happens if we minimize, you know, just like you do in parking garages in Boston, where they have the no vehicle larger than six foot seven can come into this parking garage? What happens if we lower the height of the, of the parking garage to its lowest possibility? So that, yeah, you're not parking handicap vans in it, but you can park them out back, they can still have a, a way, and we can keep the, at ninety-eight, but lower that that ceiling as much as possible significantly, because I bet you're at nine, six, or ten.
I would say that's probably true. It does, we've run into that before, where um, you know, he, you're gonna have a handicap accessible spaces inside the parking garage. And I really think that you're gonna need to be able to accommodate a, a handicap, you know, a van that's um ADA compliant.
So you need to know what that height is.
Yeah, we can look at that, Chip, but we, we, we didn't have a discussion.
I think you just have, guys, I think you just have to look. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of fine with the length of the building. I wish it was something else, but it's not, so I think you guys have done as much as you can, but I think we have to become really, really creative and not just say can't, can't, can't. And I know you think three feet's really significant, but I think we can do more, I think. I think from my crude standpoint, we can do more. Plus, by the way, a handicap van's not ten feet tall. Um, so I, 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 in where you position it, you might be able to do something with a drain for just that spot. There's lots of things you can do, but I think we gotta be really creative. Ten feet from the first floor to the road in a twenty-two foot setback is almost a forty-five degree pitch. That's on mo, you know, and, and to have a ten-foot wall, I just think.
Five feet, isn't it?
I mean, the other, the other option might be to have nothing there and have it be more level or a two or three-foot hill and let there be open grates or something, so people know it's underneath parking. Right? Not try to disguise it. I don't know, I'm just, I, I think a ten-foot retaining wall is, is wrong on that corner.
Chip? Yeah, John, how, how tall is a retaining wall, John?
No, it's, the, the retaining wall is about five feet high. And then we slope it from there to the, to the building.
So you've got it, but you're still got ten feet from the road up to the building?
Correct, to the first floor.
But to the first floor. So, so my thought is, well, maybe, you know, look at that last five feet, have that be open to the park. I don't know, you gotta do something, so there's not a ten-feet wall from the street into the building. Uh, that's my opinion.
Well, Chip.
And I think we gotta become creative.
Chip, on the handicap side, I don't believe that they've gotta provide van parking. They can provide handicap parking in there uh, for a handicap person that has a car.
You might, Jim, you might have to do a van.
Maybe not.
In Melrose, somebody had to do it.
Uh, as long as you basically have parking provided, I'm not sure that you gotta provide it in, in the garage, just because you have a garage, when in fact you have available parking on the site.
I think that could be Benny's call. I, I don't know.
Well, we're gonna look at that, we'll look at the, you know, I mean, where, where, where we kinda wanna come out of tonight is, we're gonna, Chip, everything you're saying make, you know, makes sense, and we're not adverse to looking at any of that. And, you know, if we can, if we can, if we can lower the garage, and you know, that's fine, maybe we can pick up more there. Or maybe, you know, if you wanna work with John and, and see what else can happen as far as, you know, picking up another foot or whatever, which I doubt, but we're, we're open to that, but what we're, what we kinda wanna come out of here is, we'll keep working. But if it turns out that the best that we can get is three feet, that, you know, that the board's okay with us moving forward, because that's our assumption now. Um, and, and if, and, you know, if that's not the case, you know, then I just think we're spinning our wheels.
No, I, Brian, I'm, I'm okay as if three's the minimum, and then we try to maximize it. And then we look at other options that we think might, for me, might make that, you know, call the parking garage or parking garage and, and figure out how to open it up so that, you know, so, do something in the front, so that it's not this big hill that was never there.
So, so Jim, refresh my memory, because when we had our meeting, I actually suggested tearing the retaining wall, and John, it was mentioned, and then somebody, somebody told me why we couldn't do it. Does anybody remember that?
No.
No.
All right, all right, well.
But Brian, just look into it, um, as one, an item.
And I'm happy to do it offline with people as well, so that we don't take up this time for me arguing.
If the board is okay with Chip working us on Site Civil.
With Jim.
No problem. Right, yeah, you know, the way the board looks at it, and I know the regulation, I'm looking, I'm looking in an old reg book basically for access, and I don't wanna take a whole lot of time here, but the way the board looks at it is you gotta have a p- common use. Every, and, which anybody can use, basically, whether you're handicapped or not, you don't just designate special places, basically, where they can't use it. Well, if you got a person that's handicapped, and it's maybe not somebody that's in a wheelchair, but it's a person that's blind, well, it can't be blind, but somebody that's crippled or something like that, they can still go, drive in the garage and park their car inside. My question is, whether, if you have a van, whether you gotta park, whether you have to have the ability to park it in the, in the garage, and I don't think so. But I can, I can study it, but it's up to the architect, who is, you know, got the registration, should be looking at it to see whether it's necessary or not.
Well, Jack Roberto always used to tell me with the, with projects, that your garages have to be able to access a handicap van. I mean, that was what he always said, so.
And I've heard that too. I don't know where, and I would have to believe.
But I'm gonna tell you, the handicap parking requirements are a mystery. You know, it, it's hard to get a solid answer on, on anything on that. I mean, because you got the architectural access board, you got the ADA, you get, you know, so it's, it's.
But I think we can look at is what the slowest, you know, if John says ninety-eight's ninety-eight, and that's where we gotta go, then we gotta see, you know, can we get to, you know, what's the lowest we can get that first floor to above ninety-eight? And then work on the front to say, okay, how do we tier this? Or how do, you know, wh- what, how do we really make this look like it's always been there?
And Mr. Chair, we can work, we could work with Chip on that.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments? Uh, I think the applicant's looking for some direction. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Are people feeling okay with that plan of attack to have Chip and Jim continue to work? Have Chip work with the uh, the civil and the uh, engineering, and Jim continue to work on the architecture? So it, it says in this older book, it says garages and multi-level garages where no elevator is provided, such spaces shall be located near accessible entrances, and then it goes on to say something about special van requirements. Right, well, Jim, let's, let's take this off.
Take it offline.
And uh, you know, between you and the, the applicant's architect and, and our, our building inspector, I think we can land in a, in a spot where we all feel comfortable, that we're meeting code.
Yeah, I, I frankly think that with some work, we can figure out something on the front to make it acceptable in my mind.
Dave, you were gonna say something?
Just say, I agree with the plan of attack here. I just wanna move forward with it.
Anybody else? Does anyone have a problem with it? Seeing none, uh, I think you have your direction, Brian.
Okay, that's fine. Take this members of the public here.
Yeah, I was just gonna move to that. With that, we're gonna open it up to members of the public for public comment, if you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Okay, I see, uh, Jane Dodario.
Hi, I'm Jane Dodario, One Hope Terrace. I'm across the street from the project, and I hope that the project continue to, can continue to move forward. Um, I've noticed a lot of activity over on the site since February, when this project start, first started, so I know that the developers are, are um, sincere about their desire to improve the site, and um, you know, I appreciate that they're being flexible with everything the board has asked them to do. It seems like they've done it at their own expense, it, it appears, and um, you know, they've uncovered the facts, apparently, and uh, uh, we're working with that. So I, I, I just hope that it can move forward, because it's, it, living across the street from that site for so long, you know, since nineteen eighty-four, it's really been um, not an enhancement at all, and uh, you know, eh, eh, when we first moved here, there was a little cape there, which is still there, but it's just gone to um, it's, it's just um, become decrepit over the years. So anything that goes in there, I know that's not your standard, will be an improvement to the, to the appearance of the site. But I think that it'll also correct whatever drainage issues that were created by previous projects that made so much impervious service, surface over there, and I hope that the neighbors on the other side of the project will get some relief from that. So I'm still in favor of it. I really don't mind the height, because I'm optimistic that you can work on um, some solution that is, is acceptable to the board.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you for commenting.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
That was beautiful.
Okay, seeing no others.
Probably the one most affected by it.
Yeah. Seeing no others, I'll close with the public comment for tonight. Any last comments or questions from the board? Okay, Brian, I think you got your direction.
Yeah, so um, so basically, um, our direction is that, you know, just to be clear, the board can live with the three feet, but you wanna maximize it as much as absolutely possible, and then also look at other mi- mitigation upfront.
I think that's right.
Okay.
Well, you know, three feet is one thing, to, to Chip's point, um, what can we, what do we, you know, accessible requirements, will it allow us to lower the ceiling on there to get another foot or so?
Yeah, we're, we're, that's, yeah, we've.
Don't leave that out of the.
No. Nope, understood.
Well, I, I, I thought, yeah, Jim, I thought that was part of it, so. I'm just looking up the uh, on our next meeting, as it looks like.
I also wanna see where you stand with uh, time on this, um.
Yeah, we, next meeting's October eleventh, so if you think you can do some work by then, and I, I don't have the, let me pull the file. Do you have it, Brian?
I'm gonna look. Gail might, she's pretty.
Van Clarence is nine-six.
October thirty-one, I think. Does that make sense, Gail?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So I think.
It's up to you. Do you wanna move it back a little bit?
Whatever you want, Mr. Chair. I mean, we're gonna, we wanna be here at the next meeting, because um, we've got time limits with our, with our, um, we've got contractual issues that we're dealing with, so we really need to move this. So we're gonna be in touch with Chip and Jim uh, for next week to have some discussions on this and, and, and also the town engineer on the drainage issue out back and try to move this into high gear. So um, so we'll be back, I mean, um, if you wanna, you, you.
But we can wait to the, if you're coming back on the eleventh, we wait to the eleventh and see where we are.
We'll be back on the eleventh, yep. And, and hold on a second, if you could, before you, um, Jim and, and Bill, are you okay where we are here? Uh, do you have anything to add, or you?
No, I don't, I don't have anything to add. I just thank you for the uh, consideration. I think we will do our best. Um, and I appreciate everyone taking note that we've put a lot of time into this, trying to bring it to where it is. Thank you.
All right, think of motions in order to continue.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to continue this matter to our October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we'll see you folks back on uh, October eleventh. Moving to our next hearings, twenty-three dash seventy, twenty-three dash seventy-one, twenty-three dash seventy-two, A and E Realty Trust, located at four sixty, four sixty-six, and four seventy-two Main Street.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail represented the applicant, A and E uh, Realty Trust um, at four sixty to four seventy-two Main Street. Um, I'm here on my own on this, this should be fairly quick. I just really wanted to give the board an update on this. Um, as you know, there had been a fire at the building, you probably heard that, damage was not uh, overly significant, it will not impact what we're doing uh, on the site or the project. Um, so my client's been kinda tied up dealing with that, but um, we anticipate uh, having a meeting with Bill Renaud next week uh, to, to get this project moving forward. Um, we are done with the traffic advisory committee, they, I'm trying to get the memo out of them, Bill is waiting on that. Um, the issues that they had were, you know, really de minimis, just to make us work with um, work with um, Envision. And one of the things that was a discussion with them is, is, you know, kind of access points in and out, um, that they do not wanna have a left-hand, if you're coming from downtown Wakefield, um, heading towards Melrose, they don't wanna have a left-hand turn in, because they're concerned if the traffic is backed up to Melrose, it could cause a queue in, in a section going back into downtown Wakefield, so there's, we anticipate that they'll reference a uh, restriction on that. Um, and, and it made sense, that was all vetted uh, with the uh, traffic advisory committee, but we're waiting for that memo. And then uh, we have to, there's gotta be a determination, and, and we're working with our structural folks on whether that building is gonna be totally razed or part of it rehabbed, because that's gonna have an impact on how we deal with our street grades and how we deal with, with, with our engineering on uh, meeting the, meeting the um, specifications of Envision, what they're doing downtown. To set where our driveway is, we'll be impacted by that. Uh, our engineer is saying it will be easier to dealt, deal with if the whole building will raise versus trying to, you know, navigate that issue, so. That's what we're gonna be meeting with the town engineer on next week. And um, I hope to be back um, on the eleventh with Site Civil and ready to present on that and traffic. If I'm not, then I'll continue for two weeks, but that's where we are. This is all special permits, Mr. Chair, so there's no extension needed. Um, and I would request that, I'm happy to entertain, entertain any questions, but other than that, we wanna continue it to the next meeting.
Has traffic issued any, have you been for, before TAC?
Yeah, yep, and, and, and their issues were, um, and actually I had an email with Bill Renaud on this last week. Um, so we're waiting for BHB to issue their memo, but I'll tell you what their issues were. So we're waiting for VHB to issue their memo, but I'll tell you what their issues were. Garage door, they want it secured. They'd like to see, they want. They're fine with the parking. They'd like us to try to meet the residential requirement, which is always asked for, so I think that will be in their memo. They want a condition that the town will not issue on-street parking permits. And they they are going to say that they'll allow a left-hand turn coming out of the driveway. So if you're coming out, if you want to go to Melrose, they'll allow a left-hand turn, but not a left-hand turn in. And we would have to provide the signage to enforce that. And the reason they want a left-hand turn out is if people want to go to Melrose, they don't want to force traffic downtown Wakefield to tie up that intersection. They don't want the left-hand turn in coming from downtown heading to Melrose, as I said, because they're concerned. If the traffic is backed up and you can't take a left-hand turn, you're gonna sit there with your blinker on and you're gonna back up. Traffic into the Water Street and Main Street intersection.
Okay.
So that was, so we were before them. It's been a while, so that's I I sent. An email to Bill last Thursday. I said, can you shake loose the TAC memo on the project? I'd like to have it for tonight, but they weren't able to do that, so.
Okay, well, that's why, yes, we didn't see the memo, so.
No, you don't have a memo, but I know that's what it's gonna say, because that's what Bill and I emailed back and forth. And I rewatched the video of the TAC and those are the issues that they had.
Okay. Jim, Ryan, oh, sorry.
Um, so. Has there been any further discussion maybe with Envision? Basically about a wider sidewalk, trees and all that sort of stuff? Has that even been broached?
That that's been broached, and that's what our meeting is gonna be with Bill Renault. And if Mr. McBain would like to be the designated member to participate in that meeting, he's welcome.
Yes.
You would, right, Jim?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Just like I did on the bank.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a pro, you know, we're fine with that because, you know, Jim had the input on the Santander Bank.
Yep.
So I I always like to have a ZBA member there. You know, just like we did with the bank, because now you have the answers.
Okay, thanks. Greg, will you guys say something?
Yeah, just when you do come back, I guess, when we're talking about the TAC memo. At least from my perspective, be like to be prepared to discuss how that no-left turn from the street actually works. Now, I'm just vision, I just go to the next driveway. Well, I don't, there's no, I don't know of any other. Driveways on that street that don't say no-left turn, so I just turn around, so it doesn't seem like that that even works. I would like to say. If we, I don't need to take up our time tonight if you don't want to, but that just seems completely counterintuitive to me.
Yeah, so.
Let's go to McDonald's, turn around, what's the difference?
Yeah, so. I mean, that that's, they they felt pretty strong about that because they're concerned with it backing up in an intersection. The, so what what they want to do, Greg, is they want us to pay for the sign to sign that. And a lot of left-hand turnout. They're concerned that the sign won't work. And so what they're basically saying is. The town might at some point take away our left-hand turnout. And the way they're gonna, the way they would do that is they would, they would stretch the double yellow line so you can't cross it. So, you know, you'll you'll see it in the memo, but this was really vetted with them. And and if you want to kind of, you can watch their video of the meeting. I think it was in, it was in June that they met. And it's on the TAC and you can see the discussion on this issue. It was, it was quite robust.
I don't even understand that you can't turn to enter somewhere across the W O line. That means you can never. Turn into any driveway on the other side of the street. That just, again, not to discuss tonight, but that just doesn't seem to make any sense. Not that I'm an engineer, just as an actual driver going down the street.
Like, is anyone gonna obey it, is what you're saying, pretty much, right?
No, I'll say, I mean, and I'm not one of those people to say, in my experience, but I mean. No one's gonna obey that. That just, I mean, that me, that, I don't know, that just seems like the most. Illogical. Turn from a pub, you can't make a legal turn from a public way. And where are we gonna put that on the building? So then you see it when you're already turning? But then you're just increasing even more, you know, you know, it just. I don't know. You're not gonna put a massive sign so you can see it twenty-five feet away across the street on a nice building. It just, I don't know. And so, but talking about how it's actually.
The signage will be on the street, Greg. It'd be on, it'd be like a Main Street sign right there, like kind of on the sidewalk, no left turn. Who's gonna see it? I don't know.
No one, so. Maybe they, maybe if they really feel that's wrong, maybe they can come and talk about it.
Yeah, maybe Bill, you know, what will, I'll tell, I'm glad I had this discussion with you, and I'm gonna tell Bill of the concern. And perhaps he'll come to the meeting.
Maybe not post, but it just doesn't seem to work.
We should discuss when we've got their memo and maybe Bill can attend. Yep.
That'd be good. It's a good, good point to raise, though, so if we want Bill to raise it while we're talking about it.
Or the VHB rep, somebody. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be Bill, but just someone from the TAC. Pretending innocent, I mean, you know, he's he's very qualified and very good, so, you know, I'm sure Joe would come.
Yep. Okay, I think we're ready for a motion to continue on this one.
Yep. Mr. Chair, will we continue this hearing to the October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing on Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Let's continue to October eleventh. We are now on to new hearings. Case twenty-four. Get wait, I need my glasses. Twenty-four dash seven Dana Rodriguez. At three seventy-seven Main Street.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Brian McGrail, representing Dana Rodriguez. I think Dana is here tonight. Just when you thought you were rid of Dana with his property at three seven seven Main Street, he's back again. So you might recall Dana permitted the sign on Albion Street. The affiliated sign that that goes on the building on the corner. And during that process. We had talked to the board that Dana has a grandfathered sign on Main Street, which is way up high. And it made sense to Dana because he's done so many improvements to that building. To take that sign, that's a grandfathered sign up high. Remove it and do a sign of similar fashion to what you approved on Albion Street. And put it on the Main Street side, so they're kind of matching in height. And to kind of bring the building in sync instead of having a sign way up high and one one down low. So he has applied for a special permit under our new sign by law. We submitted it to Jim for a design review board. Jim can give input on that. I think what Jim felt was it was appropriate because the board's so familiar with this to deal with it yourselves. And the D R B would just deny it so we could get it before your board for a determination. But, you know, again, as I go on, Jim can give input on that. But before, before he does, I'd like to kind of show you what what we're thinking for the property. So we're thinking of a twenty-four-foot by two-foot sign. Same as on was on is was allowed on the Albion Street side with a cob gold leaf. This is a picture of the building. It's been photoshopped, but the affiliated sign mortgage sign up above. Is a grandfathered sign. So there's a right to put that sign back up. And Dana doesn't want to do that. He thinks what would be more appropriate for the building would be to bring it down low. And match the corner of what has happened on Albion Street. So now we're dealing with the Main Street side, looking for a special permit. This is kind of how, taking that other sign out. This is just kind of an approximate of how it would look. And then I thought it would be great to kind of get the angle of both signs. So this is a sign that you've already approved. And this is a sign that would go out front. I think, you know, with a black sign here, it really balances the building instead of having a sign way up here. That doesn't match. So that is our, that is our proposal. I guess Jim is here, Jim can speak on behalf of the D R B, because this does require a design review board. So if I could ask Mr. Chair, if Mr. McBain could step in in that regard.
Yeah, please do, Jim.
All right, so. The board did not meet on this matter. As chairman, basically, I suggested that the board not. Rule on this. But have this as more of a, I saw this as more of a continuation of previous discussions. And therefore left it with with the ZBA to rule on it. And in my memo to the ZBA and the Building Department, basically. I asked for a denial on the permit so that they could come before this board, as Brian had noted. But. So alls I did was list the issues that stand here for the board to decide whether it is appropriate or not. Without input from the Design Review Board, since the board, it's the, this board itself, ZBA. Basically has taken on this task. So this is the second task on for the board. So the issue here, and the same, they're similar except one additional one to what you discussed before, or what we discussed before. Which is the sign. Should, for the sign to be legal, it has to be fifteen square feet. And in this case, it's forty-eight square feet. Also that the lettering on the sign. Should be fourteen inches allowed, but it's eighteen inches. So that's another item. The sign can only be two-thirds length. Of the facade. Where the Albion Street facade is longer. Basically, that fell within it, but at the front it does not. So the allowed. Length of the sign is twenty-two feet, and in this case, they're asking for twenty-four feet. Finally, is the issue of it not being in. The sign band. But being above the second floor line, which was the maximal height that it can be. So you've got four items basically to rule on in this particular case.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
I guess my first comment would be. Can we make it shorter? Does that work to load, to get it into that? I don't mind the location. It does look a little long on the front. I think it matches the side is great. I'm okay with everything except for the length. It seems to me to be a little long. And if we came twenty-two feet, it might be. More in line with each edge of the window that it's going under. And. I'm, don't know that I'm gonna hold. Hard to that, but it certainly seems like we could find two feet and all that.
Yeah, I'm gonna push back on that one. I feel like it's squished, to be honest with you. I mean, compared to the other sign, this one was squished. So squishing it more, to me, would make it worse. You know what I'm saying? If you look at Financial Center, it's more spread out, and this this one's. The lettering's a little closer together, so I don't think I'd. You know.
Joe, I had the same thought. I was looking at, where do you get the two feet?
I was almost gonna go the other way.
We go down in font size.
I know, but you're trying to, I just, I would just keep it to to the, if you look at that corner shot, I mean, just that messing with it. Shrinking it, I don't know, I think you should want to keep the same height. Almost, almost make it a little longer, make it like more room here, because those 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 leaves at the end are squished. Remember, we had this whole discussion last time about spreading them out, and now this one's squished again.
Is it too late to swap those two signs, so like Financial Center signs on the front? On the Main Street side and the other one goes back to the Albion Street side, so they can spread out a little more. And then the. Main Street side, where's the Financial Center can be squished, like make it shorter?
Yeah, it's it's too, it's too late. And affiliate financial group is on is on the Main Street side. That's the entrance to come into in in that that door doorway there. Yeah, and that that other sign is is already in the works. I I we did make the letters smaller than than the other side. So. I mean, I did the best we could as far as played with the sign. And and actually, we we made it a little smaller than than the other sign we had because we we had two less letters. We had a couple, you know, we had twenty twenty-four letters instead of twenty-six. So I, you know. I I'm okay with that. I I agree that it should, you know, if we could spread it out, it would probably. Be a little more appealing on the eyes, but, you know. I I just, you know, try to try to stay, you know, within where we were already, so. The 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 font, the letters are a little smaller than than the Albion Street side.
Anybody else?
I mean, I guess this just, I'm rehashing old issues, but it makes me think why, again, why we even needed the. Sign on the side, not seeing this as a whole package. Together, really sort of. I don't know, irks me here. Why we're doing this piecemeal? I I I. I don't think I would hold up the sign, but it just seems like this should have been thought thought through from the beginning a lot more.
I I thought of it a while ago, so it was just, that was already being done and it was, you know. Was told to hold off and and do this again, or. You know. Because we already had the other sign going. So so this, that's just the the one one off, one office I have. So that takes care of some of the financial services. There's still other financial services that. Are in the building that that don't pertain to affiliated financial group.
Anybody else?
No, I mean, I, Mr. Chair, I mean, I I agree with Greg saying it, just as soon as I saw the application, I had the same thought, like. You know, why didn't we just do this all at once, you know, last time as a package, but. We, here we are. I'd rather see the sign consistent with the other one, similar size, similar font, similar. And if it means it's a little longer than it, given the facade on the front, I'm okay with that. Yeah, I think we vetted the whole design thing last time to the nth degree. I'm I'm fine with what's proposed, to be honest. I don't want to stretch it. I don't want to make it even more noncompliant with the facade, but. I just. As long as it has that similar look and feel. This is what the owner's looking to do.
It's a good-looking sign. It 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 looks good. I mean, it. You know, as far as being squished, it loo- it looks that way because the the other side, when you look at it together, it might look a little squished, but. It it's pretty, it's pretty accessible to the eye. You know. When you're looking at it by itself and you don't really see that the other side, unless you're coming from the other angle.
Yeah, looking at that angle looked fine to me. If that's all you saw, I wouldn't say, gee, those look. That would be the first impression I would have. I'd say that's a nice-looking sign. I want to go do business with them.
So I think that brings up a question that I think is easily addressed. Normally, I think we, don't we see some sort of actual plan of where it is on the building, like exact measurements, not just a Photoshop? Brian, I assume this will be centered and that's something we can put in. I know it's based on these plans or whatever, but usually the plans. Show exactly where it is. Can we make sure that gets accounted for somehow?
Yeah. Yep, as a condition.
Yeah, because I guess with the way this has changed, I don't want it to be, well, they moved it over to the left because that tree's in the way, and no people see it, you know.
No, no, it it's gonna be centered.
So I think that needs to be recorded in in.
Okay. Sure.
Hey, anybody else? Hearing no more comment from the board, I'll open it up to members of the public. Brian, can you stop sharing?
Yes, I can.
If anyone's here to comment on this case, please use the raise hand in the Zoom feature. Seeing none, I will close it to public comment. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we grant a special permit under Article sixteen, Section one ninety-one oh and F. To approve the sign at the location at three seventy-seven Main Street. As proposed on the sign package. From S K one dated August first, two thousand twenty-three. With the condition. That the sign as presented would be centered on the facade at the front of the building.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I would reference the letter from the Design Review Board.
Dave, you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I would. I I didn't have it, so I didn't. I would. I I didn't have it, so I didn't didn't according to me, but yes, I would accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion.
Second the amended motion.
Hey, any further discussion or comment? Regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim, you're waving. You want to accuse yourself?
I y- yes, I I don't vote on these matters signage.
Chip?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You gentlemen.
Yep. All right, next case, twenty four dash eight Shannon and Elizabeth Crosby, uh ten Myrtle Terrace.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Brian McGrail, representing um the Crosby's on the property at the ten Myrtle uh Terrace. This is a. This is a pretty straightforward request for a uh determination. Under one ninety fifty of the zoning by law. Um, I'm gonna share the plan. And I'll blow up the uh survey plan. Uh Shannon Crosby is with me tonight. She's in attendance and this is pretty straightforward. Uh Ben required a finding, because what's happening here is we have a nonconforming lot. The house doesn't meet current setback requirements. Uh, especially as to the rear yard. Um, what's happening here is you see the outline of the house here. With these dash marks, that is an existing condition. It's a single story addition. And what Shannon wants to do is completely tear that down and put a new foundation in. It's gonna, the new addition is gonna come a little bit closer to the front, but it's gonna meet the front yard setback requirement. And the new addition is going to not be a single story addition, uh but rather a two story addition. So this kinda depicts it. This is where this is where the addition will be. It's about as straightforward of a finding or a determination. So I would suggest that. Um, this will be a determination that it does not intensify. Um, any um existing uh nonconformities. I get the right plan. That would help. Again, fairly straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions. The reason Ben wanted a finding on this was because. Uh, two reasons, it's being torn down and reconstructed, doesn't, it currently doesn't meet that rear yard setback requirement. And now it's gonna be two stories rather than one. Um, there's no, I I one thing I did thought would be helpful to share with the board, uh let me just grab this. Because there's really no neighbor impact, and I'm gonna show you that.
Brian, they take out the old foundation too without reusing the foundation, right?
You're gonna take it out. Yep. Here we go. You can see how. The only neighbor in the rear comes up uh this street and they're miles away from what's happening. And that that little piece here is where the addition is, is coming off and getting reconstructed. Brian, the the application also included a plan of land that. Appears to be a few years old and it says a proposed pool. So is that already an existing condition? That's existing, yeah, that's an existing condition. Yeah. Okay. Yes. Five years old, but I just want to double check, because it's. That was just an existing condition, so we included it. Okay, you can see here on the uh. This kind of gives you an idea of what what it is and all the buffer in the back, and this is this is this is what's coming down.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
And it, I I don't know how germane it is to what's being requested here, Brian, but is their deck really go over the lot line in the back of the? Yeah, it's been there forever. Um, you know, I asked that question and uh it's just been, you know, Shannon bought the property in like two thousand fifteen or sixteen, it was like that. And there's actually a fence beyond the deck. So, you know, that is what it is, but it's only a deck and we're not asking for any relief on that. Right, we're only considering the the um setback from the the house itself, right? Correct. For the addition. Right. All right, it's just a little hard to see. So the plan of land. The updated one, it's only shown in like a quarter of the sheet. Yeah, that's right. That's the way the engineer did it, but I I can, you want me to blow it up for you? Well, I'm gonna need dates if I'm gonna. I can do that. A vote on this, I have no ability to read what that date is. Okay, I got it. The rest of the architectures appear to be six twenty four twenty three from J Bradley Architects, right? So, but I can't read that plot plan. Yep, hold on. So this is from Thomas Bernati, stated at the bottom, June eleventh, two thousand three. Shannon, are you there?
Yeah.
This looks correct to you, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. Can you see that, Mr. Hatfield?
I do.
All right, I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Anything else, board members? Hearing none, I'll open it up to members of the public who wish to comment on this case. If you wish to do so, please raise your hand. I see in our Goodwin with the raised hand, please go ahead.
Hi, thanks for the time. Um, I'm a neighbor. I'm over at eleven Myrtle Terrace. Just wanted to bring up a couple things. You know, this is an incredibly narrow street and an incredibly incredibly steep hill. So uh even when it's not winter, a lot of problems coming up and down the hill when there's traffic going both ways and it. Tends to result in people driving onto my front lawn, which is a little frustrating, putting ruts and what have you as. People try to make it up the hill again, even when it's dry out. Um, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of what's possible, but if there could be some kind of condition that there's a parking plan during construction. You know, I I've seen it on some of these larger, more complicated projects in town. And I know this is just a a um an addition here, and I'm 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 happy that that they're doing it, and I think it looks great. Um, but I I was hoping that can be a condition of of the permit. You know, there's really just no room to get up and down the street. Uh, in in general, I'm worried about parking on the street. You know, anytime anyone has companies, there's there's parking on the street, which is. Very challenging to get around, so. Uh, you know, I'm not sure the process here, but I'd like to to bring that up as as hopefully a condition during construction at least. And in general, I'm worried about them losing parking. That is, that addition is encroaching further onto the street. Um, in function, you know, the cars that are parked there now, you know, are are right on the street, um sometimes extend on to the street. Given, you know, trap, you know, trash cans and what have you. Uh, in general, I'm just a little concerned about losing parking in that area.
Yep. Thank you. It's a uh, it is a finding, so we um, we can't attach conditions. But um, I'm sure you're. Uh. You could speak with the applicant about that, and Brian, are are you willing? Is the applicant willing to engage in that type of discussion?
Yeah, for sure. Uh, actually, Shannon and I talked about this possible issue today and um. And so she's gonna use good faith with her contractors to to uh have them park on her property.
Yeah, and I'll I'll kind of state for the record, Shannon's been great about that. We've we've talked about it. I I did mention that I'd be uh speaking up on this call.
Okay, thank you.
I can see why you care, get a nice yard.
Yeah, well, that's it's an old pick. Come on by, looks better.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, I see Kathy, the full name's on there, but it looks like maybe D Benedictus.
Yes, thank you. Hi Kathy, D Benedictus, three Myrtle Terrace. I'm at the bottom of the hill. Um, I see an awful lot of traffic going up the street of the hill uh to the top of Myrtle Terrace where it is narrow. And where that house is located is a quite a a bend. Um, it's very hard to navigate. Um, there is an awful lot of traffic going up and down the hill. My concern is not so much the building. But as Mr. Goodwin had stated, um the vehicles on the street that make it difficult for everybody on the private way. And I just wanted that to be stated for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I also see Nate Gentili.
Uh, good evening. My name's Andrew. I'm at sixteen Myrtle Terrace. I'm just up the street from Shannon, right next door, actually. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate Mr. Goodwin's uh points, you know, us being at the top of the street. Uh, you know, days that we get both our boys uh going to Greenwood School. Elementary, getting up and down the street is imperative, so there are some hot times during the day when even if there's a delivery van there or something's going on. We get blocked in for like thirty minutes or something like that, which is fine, but we all have things to go. Uh, so I just want to make sure that that i- is addressed and it sounds like it's being, you know, talked about tonight. Uh, and just want to reiterate the the point that Mr. Goodwin said. I I do see a lot of ruts on his lawn and I can understand the pain he goes through, so if we could uh. Uh, avoid that, that'd be great.
Thank you. So Brian and Shannon, you've heard those comments?
Correct.
Yeah.
You there, Shannon?
Yep.
Yeah, and you'll work with your contractors in that regard.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Seeing no other raised hands, I'm gonna close it. Well, well, a couple, one more just popped up. I'm sorry, there's a Chuck. Uh, I can't read the whole last name, because it's shortened up on my Zoom screen.
Yes, so I'll Chuck Intebatolo, twenty one Myrtle Terrace. Um, I just, you know, wanted to. Add to the the situation, you know, that as Kathy mentioned, it is a private way. It's a narrow road. In fact, the turn right where Shannon's house is, it's the. Narrowest portion of the road. And uh I'm also concerned about losing parking spaces. They do have four spaces now. But with with this construction, they will lose a spot, so they'll end up with three. And uh basically, I think the the effort is, uh the the family is expanding. Um, from three kids to four kids, which that's great for them and. Uh, you know, it. I just feel as though down the road. Uh, some of the children are starting to get a little bit older. Uh, there's gonna be a situation with less parking spaces and. Teenagers, as they usually will, will want to have a car at some point, and that could be a problem down the road. Um, and I just want to. Uh, make the point to the board that this is not a normal street. And um, you know, the parking spaces are important. And it it's, in my estimation, it's really not the best idea to add more bedrooms. And for, you know, larger families in that particular spot. Nothing against Shannon and and her mother Beth and everything. They're nice people. And I, like I say, I am happy for them that they're expanding their family, but I just think down the road. Uh, Myrtle Myrtle Terrace is not the best place. Uh, to be putting a a larger occupancy in terms of bedrooms and stuff. So, that's my two cents and um. Uh, I'll obviously, I'll go along with whatever you guys decide.
Okay, thank you. You should know that most of the board members do drive out to the site and uh I know I do, so I add it to the traffic in your neighborhood one day, but uh.
Okay. So people, people get a sense of uh what each site is uh pretty regularly, so. Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I am now gonna close it to public comment and come back for the pleasure of the board.
Tom, I I, Mr. Chair, I think it might be helpful. To kind of explain the difference between a finding and something else that we might do either a special permit or a variance. To understand that we can't put conditions on it and things like that.
Yeah, I did mention that, that this is a very low bar. It's looking at, we we cannot add um. Conditions as has been discussed a couple times here. Uh, and it does, we don't take up traffic. Uh, as part of a finding like this, we're we're just looking at um the setbacks and whether or not this is um. This is, you know, worsening a a a nonconforming situation, so it's a very narrow. Uh. Parameters of what we can make to adjudicate the case on, so. Um, and again, it's a very low legal bar, so. I don't know if that helps neighbors or not, but. Anything else from the board? Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that we find. Uh, in accordance with one ninety fifty A, we grant a finding and determination pursuant to one ninety fifty A of the bylaw. That the proposed changes, extensions and alterations at ten Myrtle Terrace. Based on the plans, uh plan of land from Massachusetts Survey Consultants dated June eleventh, twenty twenty three. And architectural drawings from Jay Bradley Architects dated June twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Shall not increase the existing nonconforming nature of the structure, that being the rear setback as shown on the plot plan.
Decided.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Dave, uh.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
That's approved. So Brian, uh, we're gonna count on you and Ms. Crosby to to coordinate with neighbors. As was discussed regarding construction and the other issues that were brought up.
That's fine.
That's a little outside our purview, but we're 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 hoping they'll do a good faith effort on that.
Okay. I would think also within the purview of the building department, a building permit, right? I mean, they can't. Obstruct traffic and impede anything, so. Yeah, and public safety, you can't, you know, you can't block a road, so. Yeah, so it's certainly in that, in the purview of that area, but not this board specifically, right?
Well, they wouldn't want to lose the access for fire to happen either.
Right.
Exactly. Public safety, right.
Okay, with that, moving on to other matters, uh, we have one on the agenda and I'm gonna raise another one afterward. But the first one is uh twenty A Del Common Street. It's a pre-application meeting.
And that's me.
Okay.
So uh, let me just get to regroup here if I could. So uh, this is a pre-application meeting for uh Three Ducklings um Learning Center. Um, and Talant, uh, uh, a bro is with me, um, and him and his wife are starting this business. Um, which is gonna be a daycare center at tw- twenty Del Common Street. Twenty Delta Kai Mine Street is the field is right by um. Colonel Field, um, out back as you go down Del Kai Mine Street, past the new uh project that uh Anthony Akari uh built. Um, and you go down and it's right across the street from the Little League Field and and I can kind of show you. This is the building. And it's a, it's been there forever. Here's the Little League Field. And then you're heading back out to Water Street. And this is, this has a parking lot, big parking lot behind it. Uh, and it's an existing building, so so um they want to put their daycare center in there. It's probably gonna have a maximum of twenty kids when it's fully operational. And um what they're looking to do is uh get a, they need a special permit. We're gonna be applying for the special permit. And we wanted to come before you on a pre-application and hopefully that you would waive the site plan, because to to do a site plan of an existing. Uh, office type building kind of makes no sense, um, because it's already there. So if you have, if you want to see it, you can drive around it. Uh, but to pay uh Hayes Engineering or um Paul Fenocchio to put a plan together, um, and kind of going out back, you can see there's. A good amount of parking. In the back and all the way around.
This is a daycare, Brian?
Yes.
No playground?
At some point, Chip, they might want to do a fenced in area, but they're not doing that yet. They'd have to work that out with the landlord, but you know.
That's the only reason I'd want a site plan. I'd like to, you know, if they're not coming outside of the building. Fine, but if they're putting it, it would surprise me that they're not putting enough fenced in outs exterior area.
Yeah, they've talked to the state, because they have to be licensed to them, and they've got plenty of parks in the area. They've got, you know, this this area here. Yeah, they've talked to the state because they have to be licensed to them and they've got plenty of parks in the area. They've got, you know, this this area here and then they have.
Oh, I guess they could walk over to the ball field.
That's right. So they have some options and they might, so I mean, I can talk to them and maybe if they're gonna do a fence, if we could just do kind of like a a sketch of where they're gonna put it.
Or that they'd come back if they're expanding.
Yeah, that's fine. I can talk.
Hold on to the site.
Um, let me ask, my client is on, um. Talant, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Why don't you introduce yourself and 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 let Mr. Tavel know what you're thinking in that regard?
Uh, yeah, my name is Talant Hebroy. Um, I I live in Wakefield. Um, we, my wife has been in the business for fifteen years and uh, we want to open our own center. Um, so we do have options uh for parks in the area. Uh, we just like that as a feature, just to offer that to the kids. It would be a nice feature a- at some point. Uh, we don't want to do that right away since we have these options, but it would be, it would be nice to have.
I think what the board is saying uh, Talant, is if you decide to do that in the future, you know, if they, if if when we apply, if you were fortunate enough to get the special permit, we'll probably have a condition that if you decided to fence it in, you would have to come back to get their approval to do that.
I understand.
Okay, otherwise, you and I can make a decision. If you wanted to do it now when we apply, then you would do a site plan. We can talk about that after the meeting. Is that what you were anticipating, Mr. Tavel?
Chip, you're muted.
Uh, sorry. Yes, that's fine.
So Brian, what type of relief is they gonna need?
They need a special permit which will require.
Put it in, pu- put it in the building?
Yeah. The use, the use requires a special permit, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and are they gonna need parking really?
No, I mean, they only have two employees, so I mean, you know, I I think it's, it will be one of these things that's uh, you know, doesn't even uh, trigger the parking. I mean, I'd rather not.
I don't want a site plan, but if you're gonna come back, I'd like to explain how they're gonna do drop off and pickup and that kind of thing.
Okay. Yeah.
Especially taking into account, I'm there quite a bit for T-ball and it's pretty, it's pretty packed.
That's my thing. Yeah, you know, I don't know what time of night, but Greg having, and I think Joe's kid plays now. That pumpkin down is brutal, especially during Little League season.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that would be after hours, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily. I pick one up and head right over to T-ball, so.
Defensive edge still back there too? Defensive edge in the back, in that back building, so you pick up some drop offs for that too, right? I think. Anyway, there's just other businesses back there, obviously, besides this one. So you have vehicle traffic. We need to know the pickup drop off routine if there's gonna be some sort of directional signage added, you know? Something to to guide traffic with respect to the other businesses in that site, yeah. Okay, you understand Talant, you and I can talk about that.
Uh, yeah, for sure, yeah. The the festing uh, defensive edge they have uh, so it's a separate building. They have their own parking lot on the other side. Um.
But again, it's just traffic. There's a lot of traffic flow. And just, we we just want safety. Safety is the paramount here, right? Just how it, how it all work. In concert with other places, yeah.
You you don't have to answer tonight. We're just trying to point out what we're, we're gonna want to see when you come back. Anybody else?
Well, what about a headcount? Should we ask? I mean, if there's only two employees, I mean, you know, there's ten kids, that's a lot different than thirty kids.
The state, the state sets all that stuff.
Yeah, it's anticipated too much. You're gonna start with ten kids and maybe work up to twenty, right?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah.
Which I guess Joe's point, though, we'd want to know, probably, like Brian said, work up to twenty. Make sure that that, for the traffic, you know, what's the worst case scenario?
Exactly, yeah.
So.
Yeah, and and the hours of operation are gonna be seven thirty um, till five.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, thank you for the uh, for the heads up on those issues so we can be prepared.
Yep.
So you're okay with the site plan is waived as long as we can address those concerns in some fashion?
Yeah, I didn't hear any objections, so if anyone has one, speak now or.
But we need a motion, right, Mr. Chair? Yeah, you do. Yeah, Brian, yeah. So I'm, I'd make a motion to uh waive uh site plan approval for this application should it proceed and towards a formal application before this board as part of a special permit.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
No, I I would make a yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question for future on these things. If we waive site plan review and then we get into it and we decide we need it, can we go back on our decision?
Well, you can either add or just say, if 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 we, if you don't, if you don't provide us what we're looking for, we we don't have enough information. We're gonna deny a special permit, so, you know, so I would tell my client.
I just like, like it comes up like,
Yeah.
Oh, we gotta put bathrooms in. Oh, well, where does the sewer come, you know?
Yeah.
I I don't know what it would be specific, but I just was curious about that in the future. If we do pass on site plan review, can we come back and get it?
I don't see, I don't see any issue with it, you know?
Yeah.
You know, what you can do is, and and we do it here anyways, but you can say we wa- you know, we waive it uh, subject to the fact that if something changes during the hearing, we might require information in that regard to reserve.
Yeah. Okay.
But most of these are so straightforward that, you know, the buildings are already built and you know, the purpose of the plan is to get an idea of what you're gonna do and if it's already there, what's better?
Yeah, no, no, I I just, that was a real long, long and thought process curiosity thing.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next up is a other matter or we could put on the clerk or board comments or whatever section. Wanted to bring up the um, the project on the Han Street as it relates to timing. They clocked in to the town clerk's office, their application for the comprehensive permit on September twenty-fifth. We have to open a hearing within thirty days or that comprehensive permit could be deemed approved under forty B. So it's different from how we operate on all the other special permits and so forth. So Gail and I figured that out today. And uh, she's gonna send a note to Steve. We might need a special meeting before the twenty-fifth. That gives us enough time to advertise that meeting properly. It's too late to put it in on the eleventh. So I want to give folks a heads up that we gotta find out. We have someone because it's right on that thirty days, right? You know?
So why, why were they not like here tonight?
Well, they just filed on the twenty.
They filed Monday.
So we couldn't advertise properly before this.
You think this was a play?
I I'd rather stay away from um, intent that we can't uh, judge. I'm sure we all have our own uh thoughts on that, but we just have to nail down our process and make sure that this is a big one and that we that on a technicality, it can't get through. It doesn't mean that, you know, maybe we could have negotiated, but I don't want to negotiate with an attorney with one arm tied behind our back to come in and go through the process. Um, so I I, if Gail's already, I think, prepared to talk to Steve now and help us get a a determination of what we need to do. And if we don't need one, maybe we can go with the twenty-fifth, but there's a very good chance I think we're gonna need a meeting. Probably, we're probably looking at the Wednesday in between. So I at least wanted to put that on people's radars for putting their time aside. Um, and if we can't get a quorum on that day, then we'll, we'd have to pick a date around that. Um.
What, what's the date?
Eighteenth, October eighteenth.
Yeah. The other consideration, Mr. Chair, is what if something happens the eighteenth, there's a flood and we can't have the meeting now that we can't even open it? So even if we were right on the cusp and we could proceed as we do with extensions, right? Something happens to that meeting, we can't open it, now what? Right? So it's, it's, it's good that you thought of this. I don't know who you or Gail thought of it.
Tom picked up on it.
No, so it's good. And yeah, we should, we should probably consider a special meeting ahead of it, just so we're covered. And properly notice it, so.
These two couldn't have, as we even asked Tom if they can even, you know, they provide us waivers. Once it's opened, can they provide us waivers a- in that point? I mean, there's no public hearing, so is there even at really any discussion with them? Like to, so maybe they can't provide us a waiver. I I just don't know. Have we talked to Tom?
I think attorney, yeah, Attorney Schumer, I think, but you know, we ran into this with him and he was very honest and upfront and he, if I, I'll have to look in the file, but I think he did a letter to the board saying that he knew what was going to be more than thirty days and that he and his client were okay with that. It was clocked in with the Tom Clark.
Greg, I think there's a, I think there's a provision that if both sides agree that it's not gonna be thirty days. But again, I want to nail this down. I don't, you know.
Yeah, it's great you picked up on it.
Yep.
I would have been like Tweedledee Tweedledum.
Yeah, I I do recall the one on North Ave because I, yeah, I was still chair at that time, yeah. If if both parties agree, then you can do it and say, you know, we're all acting in good faith and we're gonna proceed and intent, all intent is to open it on that night, right?
Just, just for tone setting, I think it makes sense in reaching out and seeing what they're open to. I mean, it's, it's not like we're acting in bad faith. That that was our schedules out there.
Right.
You know, we're all, and 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 they know we're all volunteers and.
So it's either a meeting ahead of that and they'd have to be present and be amenable to that or agree that you know, it it could go beyond thirty days if something happens and that meeting doesn't happen on schedule, as scheduled, or it's.
Yeah, I would want that letter. I'd want that in writing, though.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, 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 and on file and yeah, absolutely.
So, so Gail's gonna check tomorrow with, you know, Steve and Steve will do check with who he wants and it's not our job to decide who he wants to check with, but um, if you guys can just check your schedules and if it's open, keep it open on the eighteenth. If there's a problem for uh, folks, I know Wednesday nights are a problem for Mickey, you know, for this month, so we're kind of down on, um.
And it would just be for that hearing. So if we did have a special meeting, just for that, we'd open it, initial discussion as we normally do. And that would be it, right? And then the twenty-fifth would be our normal.
Would we even have to have discussion or do we just need to open it?
I think we want to ask all those questions because I think it's gonna be tough to open the public hearing and tell the public that they can't talk. Um.
Although you do know that we're one of the strength, we're one of the unusual ZBAs that allow public conversation.
Well, uh, all the cities and towns I work in allow it, trust me.
Oh, yeah, no.
And it's going to be public on this one.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Once they get noticed, I think it would be hard for us to say you can't say anything and that you came out tonight and we're just really continuing this to, you know, the next week. So if we open it in some ways.
Not so bad to have it as a single.
Right.
Entity.
Yep.
And get that initial presentation as we always do. We go high level through the, the whole thing, right?
Yep.
What, what happened to our next meeting, the eleventh? That it wasn't, it wasn't gonna be in the paper?
That the advertising's already done. They have to be notified fourteen days the year but are ahead of time and that that was today, I think. Yeah, it's too late.
We don't, yeah, we didn't have the two weeks.
It's, no.
Which is why, you know.
And even if it's the eighteenth, they'll have to do the advertising, you know, next week for that one.
So we gotta, we gotta move on this, so.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Good, good catch. And yeah, let's, let's get the note out tomorrow and.
Yep.
So if folks, if folks have a problem with the eighteenth, can they try to email by the end of the day tomorrow if you're not aware of your schedule today?
I'm good for the eighteenth.
I'm good.
Take a survey.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to be, great.
Cambridge will have to be. Cambridge can go on hold.
I'll let everybody know tomorrow what Steve says, if we have to talk to Tom Mullin or I don't know, but.
It 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 comes down to how they count thirty days too. It's.
I, exactly, because it's, if you count the twenty-fifth to that, you know, it's thirty-one days. And see, we have a schedule and they, they did clock that in one day ahead of the dead deadline, so I don't know. I have my suspicion.
Yeah, you have your suspicions.
Okay. Good one.
So that, it takes care of that unless anyone has questions or anything else. Uh, next up is Clerkwood Comments. Joe or Jim, anybody have anything?
Uh, yeah, I'll give you a little bit of a quick update. Um, the gas station on Four Corners, the set is in and been approved for permit. Just to let those know, um, some of you may know that after presentation by um, that applicant, it turns out that they were also, or they changed the plans and put a basement in there with a, a lift in there for storage. We didn't, it was never presented to us that way. Um, and it only came up with the permit set, but they've since withdrawn it because of structural issues in digging out the soil next to the school. So Ben is, so what we've, what's going in is what we were presented with at this point. Um, Chip and I went out to um, three eighty-one Salem Street and we approved um, the project basically at this point. We did have to give them a little bit further direction on some work to complete. But it uh, it's basically complete as far as we're concerned. I'll go there and make sure that they follow up on the, on the few items that are there.
Five eighty-one, you mean, up on?
What's that?
Five eighty-one Salem?
Uh.
You said three eighty-one, is it the?
I got, I got three eighty-one, but I could be wrong on that.
It's five eighty-one.
It is, the one that's almost done and then there's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about the.
No, no, no worries. I just want to make sure I was understanding your site.
No, that's.
That one's almost ready for a full occupancy.
Yeah. And the same builder basically on five ninety, uh, two, two, uh, two fifty-nine Water Street, which is um, Peter Sandor's building. Uh, in that, we rejected it. They've been giving an occupancy permit ahead of time, but Chip and I found, of Chip particularly, um, found that some of the trees along the front are undersized and there's about four uh, shrubs that are at the back of the site that are dead. Now, the, in this particular case, the landscape was done by the bill, by the building owner and not by the contractor. So at this point, they're gonna have to come back to us and present something, but we have not signed off on it as a ZPA.
Is that the, is that the ball field one?
Two? Yes.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay.
Why would they come back? Why don't they just fix the landscaping and get a check mark?
Because they're gonna, they put in two, two to two and a half inch trees and three inch trees were called for.
Oh, so they, they're gonna have to get a minor mod.
If, yeah, which I'm not gonna allow.
So I was just trying to clarify why they'd come back, okay? For, not to fix the dead stuff, but for the stuff.
That would be, that would be my thought.
Yeah.
Okay, even to the untrained eye, it looks pretty bad. I think I brought that up at a previous meeting.
Uh.
And they don't.
Yeah, I mean, the trees are, the trees are small at best.
And I never even, I never noticed that stuff.
You're getting better, Greg.
So the.
They're getting worse.
So the final one is something that that comes from the past. Greenwood Station at one thousand Main Street. I've written, I've denied the permit on this one. For one, um, there are all the civil drawings basically reference a site in Malden on Main Street. Can't make this up. That's what's in the drawings. And the elevations don't show the ventilation in the foundation for the garage, nor does the structural uh, structural. And as far as lighting, we had a bunch of lighting that we approved. And instead, what they're saying carries so much money for lighting. And what they've shown on electrical drawings is more like a two by four fluorescent fixture, basically, is at least in the diagram. So they've got a little bit of work to do. I think I've got eight items I picked off that are just wrong.
But this is the building set. They were actually now applying for building permit after all this time.
Ain't happening.
So that's.
They're gonna tie it up in another month, right? It's, we gave them, was it October, November?
I think November.
So that's a forty B. That's a forty B, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty much any change that comes back to us is minor modification, so.
The civil engineer actually shows two entries to the, to the building site, which I think was what was proposed way back when and extra parking on the outside. But it's on the same site. It just says it's in Malden.
Which is likely not a minor modification.
We don't have any responsibility for Malden.
Well, certainly wondering what, what was hap, if anything was gonna happen with that one. So at least it's, they're trying. Sounds like they have work to do, Jim, but they're trying.
With that one coming in though, you know, Dave, your email earlier this week about finding out where we stand really, I think, uh, was a great idea. So Gail, I can write Aaron on that or, you know, I don't wanna put all this on you.
Um, no, she already got back to me and she put it on her calendar, but Steve wanted a meeting first. Anyway, um, so gonna get back to me definitely tomorrow, but she did put October eleventh on her calendar.
Cause I do think as part, you know, we're gonna wanna explain to the public on that in the Han Street, but, you know, the not forty B isn't something that people deal with a lot, uh, in their lives, so.
And if they know anything, they've probably heard about the ten percent, but there are other potential safe harbors. And I don't know that any of them could be applied here, but at least if we have the data, we can present it, she can present it. And then it's out there, right? And I think that's the key. You know, we know where we stand and whether any of them can be applied. And if they don't, then we move forward, right? Yep. All right. Well, thanks, Gail. I know you said you were gonna try to get that additional information. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I already put the request in. I haven't heard anything back on that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other comments?
Uh, yeah, Tom, so we, the bylaw review committee met last week. So the bylaw re, uh, reclassification, that's on hold for a little bit because of, um, Mr. Barbrowski, I guess. Steve may have found out that, um, Barbrowski has a partner that's doing a forty B in town right now that he didn't know about. Yeah. So they're trying to rectify that somehow. So it's on hold for a few months.
We're ahead of time.
Yeah, that's a little bit of-
Isn't that interesting?
Yeah, and he didn't, he obviously knows about his partner, but he didn't know his partner was doing a forty B right in Wakefield while he was trying to reclassify that zoning bylaws.
Interesting.
But well, from, so from a being in a law firm standpoint, that's not uncommon, but what he should have done was to get, to get the town to sign an ethical waiver beforehand. It's not uncommon at all. It's usually fine. I mean, yeah, cause that's a huge, you know, any lawyer that's making any sort of money isn't gonna put his bar license up for simply something as stupid as that.
Yeah, no, I know.
No, and he's, he's Mr. Land use. I just find it interesting.
Yeah, Joe, I started to get emails on that, then I stopped getting them. So.
Well, yeah. Ian London, I don't know, he wants to meet, it was, it was always like early in the morning. No one could find out the perfect time to meet and then it just kinda stopped. And then we had a meeting, what, last Monday about it and he, he brought it to our attention that it's gonna be on hold for a little bit. So we're still doing all the other bylaws, uh, just not the doing right now.
All right. Well, thanks for that. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another, another subcommittee, I think I'll be giving you guys an update. I think maybe at that twenty-fifth meeting about the MBTA. What are we calling MBTA Communities Act? There's like an official, um, slide deck that Jim Hogan's putting together. So I'll be presenting that then. So no real updates at this time, but if anyone has any questions, I will be presenting in about a month.
Great.
I can't wait.
Right? Keep you guys wrapped attention. I, I hope.
Boy, if you're-
I hope it's at midnight.
All right.
So my one, one item, I actually, I dropped those, um, affidavits off at, at the building department today. I was talking to Gail. And I was curious what, what was going on in ninety-seven, ninety-nine water after all the work we did on the special permit and then we heard the property was up for sale. And I was curious who bought it because I drove by, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago and I noticed they were putting vinyl siding on the building. Saying, well, that's a change from what we approved. Uh, and I guess it's been sold by or bought by somebody who just wants to keep it as a two family. Right, Gail? So doing whatever they're doing by right and I, I was, in the back of my head, I was thinking, you know, the concerns from the butter at that time about now we're putting a building in front of his new improved building. And I thought maybe he bought it and wanted to keep it where it was. So in the back of my head, I was like, maybe he did that, but it turns out it's some other couple that I got one. So, yeah, it's a various. It's a various old place. He sold it.
Okay.
And I actually know the broker. I saw ours post on Facebook like, hey, I got this property in Wakefield. I was like, I know that property because it said, you know, ZBA approved already or zoning approved for a special, you know, mixed use development, blah, 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 but.
So did he get rid of that to put money in across the street? Maybe.
They'll do the one across the street, yeah.
Do you know what's going on across the street, Gail? Cause he dug the hole and that's the-
Yeah, I think it's environmental things. Yeah.
He dug a hole. It's just been sitting there for the last six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, I always-
It was a gas station, guys. The chance of, of it had twenty-one E issues is pretty good.
Yeah.
That and mechanics, with all the oil goes with it.
Yep.
Anyway, just observations as we drive around town and see the things that are approved, wonder.
Did you ever go to Tarrant Lane?
No. Oh, I'm glad you brought that up. So, so what's the deal, Gail? Well, maybe Gail can, maybe if we're gonna go, it sounds like it has to be noticed. Am I, cause they don't want us to come-
No, we shouldn't go as a group.
Piecemeal. We'd have to go as a group and agree on a time and then Gail would have to notice it, right? So.
Yeah.
So I think you just go, I think the offer was just to go up, right?
Well, when I talked to John O'Connor, he told me he wanted to, he didn't want everybody to just come, you know, he wanted everybody to go together. And so, yeah, if there's more than two, I have to, you know, notice it. And he wants to know when because I don't know, I guess his time, his time, like next week, he's not gonna be there Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So his time's getting filled up. So we missed Friday's date. So if it's next week or some other time, you know, I need forty-
Do more than two people wanna go during the day?
Then it has to be noticed.
It has to be noticed.
Right. So I'm asking, do two people wanna go more than a day? I mean, I'm happy if others go and just tell me it's coming along. I mean, I'm not ready to go now because it seems like they're way out still.
You're gonna have to go with the end anyway.
Yeah.
I was, I was interested to see it. If it's just me, then I'll, I'll make arrangements, but if anyone else wants to go, then I, I-
I'd say you and one other.
I guess have a tough schedule the next couple of weeks, so I, I, I don't know if I'm-
Yeah, I'm, I'm out for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
You're on your own.
If nobody else does, then just, yeah, if you just let me know when he's available, I'll take a ride by in my travels and-
Invite, invite Amy and Greg, cause they're the ones that sort of oversaw the design. And Amy would be more than willing to come.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Amy.
And comment.
As an interested party, sure. All right. Well, it, thanks, Gail. I mean, you put it out there and we have visited, well, we've attempted to visit her. We never got to see Grayson Lofts that they never really opened it up because of COVID or whatever, but they offered us a tour after the fact, after we saw it initially, right? Um, before the construction, but I, I always enjoyed seeing them. I think some of us saw one seventy-five north and you know, some of these larger ones, it's, it's nice to see them. And I, I know, as you said, Chip, Jim, maybe at the end to make sure that they've checked all the boxes, but if they're close and it's worth seeing, I, I was interested in a, a quick tour. So.
My only comment on that one is it's really big.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we knew that and I think the folks from Reading knew that.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, uh, we ready to approve minutes? Did we get minutes? We got minutes, right?
I won't be making an emotion since I wasn't there.
I moved that we approved the minutes as written.
September thirteenth.
Of course, that's what I intended to say.
All in favor just aye.
Aye.
With the one abstention from Dave for not being here. And with that, I don't even think we need a motion to adjourn. We can just leave.
Enthusiastic, just leaving. Just get out of here. Bye, guys.
We'll see you guys.